Thank you, everybody. We have quorum here. We're going to call the meetings to order. And I would like to remind the members of the public that advise them that the meetings will be webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived by the city's website. Other individuals in the media may also be audibly and or visually recording this meeting. And I ask you to take any of your black barriers and put them on silent mode, please. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, yes, there are two pages. So added is item 4.2, a delegation request submitted by Rodrigo Narro Perez on behalf of the McMaster Student Union respecting the bus lane closure and light rail transit. And as of this morning, Mr. Perez has asked for the February 6 GIC. Added is item 4.3, a delegation request submitted by Terry Langley, Canada Union of Postal Workers regarding the discontinuation of home delivery. Added is item 4.4, a delegation request submitted by Andy Patterson, Manager Municipal Engagement, and Susan Margos, Vice President, Government Relations and Policy from Canada Post in response to item 8.1, report LS 15001 slash PW 15008, the replacement of home delivery within community or with community mailboxes. Item 5.1 has been moved on the agenda to item 7.2 as there is now presentation to accompany that report. Not a change to the agenda, however, item 6.3, a delegation request from William A. Warnock, which was previously approved, does have an attachment and it has been put in the year changes to the agenda. Item 7.1, Appendix A to report PED 15014. Appendix A was printed in the agenda just in front of item 7.1 rather than behind it. Listed as to be distributed on the agenda is item 8.4, Appendix C, which is in the yellow copies before you. Added as item 8.4A, correspondence from Robert M. Clark, CAO, Port Fuel Services, respecting the Energy from Waste Project in the Port of Hamilton. Recommendation is to be received. We received that in our office this morning. Added is item 8.5, report PW 15012, respecting Tim Hortons Field Community Bookings. Added is item 8.6, report PW 15006, respecting the standardization of the Advanced Traffic Management Systems Central Software Package. This was scheduled to go before Monday's GIC meeting, which was canceled due to inclement weather. However, it is time sensitive, so we brought it forward to this meeting for your consideration. Added is item 10.1, a notice of motion respecting the right to healthy environment. Added is item 10.2, a notice of motion respecting the feasibility of adjusting HSR fares. Added is item 10.3, a notice of motion respecting reconstruction and replacement of the road and sidewalks on Cromwell Crescent. Item 8.11, amendments to outstanding business list is no longer required and is withdrawn from the agenda. Added is item 11.2, correspondence from the Hamilton Professional Firefighters Association, Local 288, respecting a proposed committee of two councillors and two firefighters for a proposed fallen firefighter memorial. Recommendation is for the consideration of committee. As well, we have outside legal counsel attending for a closed session matter. And it has been requested that approximately 12 o'clock, we move into closed session to hear those matters and then reconvene to finish the agenda if there are any outstanding items.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. May I please have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Councillor Partridge, Councillor Persuda, all those in favor? Any against? Declarations of interest? Are there any declarations of interest? No? Being none, may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 14, 2015 GIC meeting as presented? Councillor Pearson, Mayor Eisenberger, all those in favor? Any against? Delegation request. What is the committee's wish respecting item 4.1? Councillor Far?
Yeah, this is a delegation request from a representative of the North End Neighborhood Association to speak at our next meeting, I believe. I'm still booting up my computer. It is our next meeting. And I put a call in when I saw this the other day to John Mater and the group from Public Works who are behind the installation and pilot, five-year pilot of the North End Traffic Management Plan, trying to get the timing on when they may be offering, if they are offering, a report or an update. And thought maybe it would be, we would be best served as a council to have this delegation also offering an update from the neighborhood perspective to coincide with that report. So I don't have that answer yet as to when that update may occur, probably at the two-and-a-half-year mark, which is imminent on the five-year pilot. And so I'm wondering if maybe we could refer this to that committee date when it is, when it is established and then maybe work with the clerk to notify the North End Neighborhood Association. There may be other neighbors in the North End that wish to speak that day as well.
Okay, so you're moving, Councillor Far, to move this to another date?
Which I don't have the date yet, but we'll work with the clerks on that.
Right, we'll work with the clerk's office. So, Councillor Far, Councillor Partridge? Okay, all those in favor? Thank you. Any against? 4.2, Mr. Perez has requested, as of last evening, to have his presentation date moved to the February 6 budget meeting. Please note that the advertised date for the public delegations to appear respecting the budget process is February 24. Would the committee like to make an exception to this date to allow Mr. Perez to present on February 6 ahead of the public delegations meeting or the February 24 meeting with the rest of the budget delegations? Anybody from council? Do we want, Mr. Perez, mayor?
Let me suggest that we do them all at the same time. I think that's, that's fair and reasonable. We have all the other delegations lined up at that moment in time. So I would move that we hear that delegation when we hear all the others, which is?
February 24.
I would move that.
And seconded by Councillor Partridge? All those in favor? Councillor Far?
And I'm absolutely fine with that. It makes sense. I think, having had a discussion with Stephanie about this this morning, I noted through some correspondence with Mr. Perez and the MSU that they were, they seemed fine with the 18th or the 24th anyway. Initially, they had requested the 6th, but the general procedure, as the mayor has noted, is during the budget process, we have the delegation day and that is the 24th.
Thank you, councillor. All those in favor? Any against? It's carried. 4.3, Terry Langley, Canadian Union of Postal Workers requesting the discontinuation of home mail delivery. Requesting to appear before the committee today. What is the committee's wish respecting 4.3? Councillor Jackson, Councillor Pearson, all those in favor? Any against? It's carried. Andy Patterson, Manager Municipal Engagement, and Susan Margos, Vice President of Government Relations and Policy off Canada Post in response to item 8.1, the requesting to appear before the committee today. What is the committee's wish? Councillor Jackson, Councillor Vanderbeek, all those in favor? Any against? It's carried. Consent items, 5.1 has been moved to 7.2 and 5.2 may have a motion to receive, item 5.2. Mayor Eisenberger, seconded by Councillor Green, all those in favor? Any against? Thank you. 6.1, I'd like to call upon Phil Isatoussin and Beth Carey of the Redeemer University College to prevent the presentation respecting the Gifted Outreach Conference's winning proposal.
What we have to say today is very important, and so we hope you have your full attention. Today, we will speak to you about child poverty. Child poverty is a serious problem in Hamilton, which needs a lot of attention and help. Hamilton has one of the worst poverty rates in Ontario. This is an unbelievable title to have, and we must take serious action to remove it from our wonderful city of Hamilton. We should all work together to end child poverty. We will now tell you some important information and some solutions of how to end it. For that child in Hamilton who lives in poverty, is Hamilton really the best place to raise a child?
Still have not been able to eradicate poverty for the past 25 years, and we vowed to end it by the year 2000. We are 15 years past the time we vowed to end it. We need to keep working. Over half of our immigrants live in poverty. Do you think that this inspires people who are looking to move to our community? A child that lives in poverty is three times more likely to develop a mental illness than one that is not. Think about that. What is the impact to our city? Resolving this will help our economy in several ways. Fewer people requiring health care and more people working to help our economy and a happier community. People who live under the poverty line have an average life expectancy that is 21 years less than average. 21 years. That is definitely lowering our average life expectancy and with it, our reputation. 60% of single-parent families with children under the age of 12 live in poverty. And remember, with child poverty comes mental illnesses. Families who live in poverty are also unable to provide healthy food to their families. The cost of feeding a small family fresh fruits and vegetables and healthy food was $172 a week in 2013. And with the cost of rent and other needs, it is impossible to feed a family a healthy diet. This also impacts our health care system and in turn, our economy. We have yet to accomplish the goal that was set out to eradicate child poverty in our city. You would think that as a community, we would care enough about our future as a city to focus on this goal.
In Hamilton, child poverty has been a problem for more than 25 years. And if we can resolve most of it, that will strengthen Hamilton's economy. We have come up with many ideas to support this, and we hope to persuade you to help us. We believe that you should raise minimum wage because a person working at minimum wage for a year makes $1,275 less than the poverty line. We also believe there should be more jobs to let people in poverty earn more money, and with that comes more work benefits for those in poverty. Why do we continue to outsource to other countries when we could be making things right here in our city? Although our focus is child poverty, most of these children have parents who need money and jobs to support their children. Another solution is to expand the public transit system and make it more accessible and affordable. This is important because most people in poverty use public transit to get around. This is a big change, but it is a necessary one. These children in poverty often have extremely poor health, and that is a massive disadvantage to the government. Two words, affordable health care. Would you rather help people get out of poverty so their health improves and you don't have to pay as much in terms of health care? Access to good health care for the poor affects everyone in the city because the more often someone has to access health care, the more costly your taxes are. Our final suggestion is the creation of community gardens. The city can create these throughout the city and provide seeds, wood for plots, soil, and teach people about a healthy lifestyle and having the communities be part of the solution. What can we do? What are we doing as a community today for that child in Hamilton who lives in poverty? Is Hamilton really the best place to raise a child?
We thank you very much. There was, very, very much work has been put into this, but we have a few questions, if you don't mind, if we can ask. So if you can come up and maybe try to answer them. We have Councillor Marilla and Councillor Green at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and many thanks for the very passionate presentation here today. And I think that it's fair to say that everyone around this table, including this community, feels as passionate about this particular issue as they do. One of the issues, though, I think, in the presentation, that your teachers might want to expand upon subsequent to this date, is that jurisdictionally speaking, there's the federal, provincial, and municipal governments. And when you're looking at this issue of poverty, the crux of this jurisdiction, or the real jurisdiction, is that of the federal provincial government. And half of our operating budget has to do with issues surrounding upper levels of government. So without getting into any specific details to you, to whoever would like to answer this, could you, could you bring that issue back, and I'm sure they're listening right now, to ensure that the curriculum actually reflects what the challenges that we're faced with? And, and so you can talk to your teachers, I don't expect you to answer this, but I'm hoping they're listening, so that they can look at the global impact that every level of government has. And that is, we're filling potholes and putting up stop signs, and we're only taxing 2% of what people are being taxed for. 98% of the taxes go to upper levels of government. And we need your help now because at your age, some of the frustration that we're faced with is that your parents' age are believed that we basically have the answer and the money for everything, when we only have 2% of it. So what I'm hoping today is that when they go back, is that they can expand upon that very theory and issue and the pressing challenges that we at city council are faced with. Secondly, Councillor Green and I are organizing an event for Crown Point, and it's a bus trip. And we're going to the heart of the provincial government, that's Queen's Park, to deal with these very issues because the confusion not only exists within the curriculum apparently, but also in communities and neighborhoods about who does what, who pays for what, and where we should be targeting our energy to make a difference. And I invite you, your school and your teachers, to participate in that endeavor at Queen's Park so that we can really make a difference. And I truly, truly appreciate your passion, and I look forward to working with you, not only now, but in the future. Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. And it was no question, just merely a comment. Okay, Councillor Green?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to the fantastic students, I'm just, a couple of questions. What motivated you to take on this topic? What grade are you guys representing? And what are your plans after this presentation?
Have an answer for them?
So for how we got the topic, we're not exactly sure. We went into the room to start working on it, and we just saw that we had that topic to work on.
And which, which grade levels do you guys represent? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So just, just to answer, because I'm not sure if they, these are students from all over. So they're from all different schools, the Catholic Board, the Public Board, and the Christian School. And they come together at a conference, and they work with Redeemer students. And they're given topics that are considered important in the community. And then they do debates. So one of them was bike lanes. So they did different topics. Then they present to all of the students that are there. So there's quite a few, quite a few hundred students there. And then the group that makes the best argument comes forward. So these are students all from different schools that have worked together for a couple of hours, and that's about it.
So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, and on that point, to the students, all the students that are present today, first of all, and the ones that are in the gallery, it warmed my heart to come in here and see you guys engage council. And the passion that you showed in your presentation clearly reflects your interest in child poverty. And it's certainly something that I know I'm working on in my ward. And I invite and encourage you guys to take Councillor Marula up on the offer to visit the provincial legislature and see how those processes go. And if that's possible, it's something I would highly recommend you to do. And I would also put forth the challenge that after today, each of you consider how you're going to interact with government and the political process to make us accountable and to continue to hold us accountable to the promises that we made some 20 years ago. It's very commendable. I'm a new councillor, young-ish, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. And, and certainly, you know, when we get into the things that Councillor Marula was talking about, the day-in and day-out grind, your presentation has reminded me why I ran for office. So my hope is that 20 years from now, we'll be voting for you guys. So I just wanted to say that. I'm inspired by you and hope to see you around city council more often. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, councillor. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you very much. You know, I'm not so young-ish, but I am well aware of the problem. And you know what? It really starts to kind of hit home when, when a group of students also recognize the problem and understand that we need to do better. So you're 100% right. There's absolutely, everything you've said is correct. We need to make a more improvements on poverty in general, and child poverty specifically. We are collectively governments, we shouldn't single out anyone. Collectively, we're not doing enough to make, you know, the kind of impact that actually will alleviate child poverty in the near term. And that's been part of everyone's frustration. But I think the reality is that once the community at large makes enough noise, like you're doing today, and says, we want you to make poverty a priority, and we're willing to put resources into that, then we're really going to make a difference in terms of that issue. So your, your help today is going to make, make a difference in terms of getting the community aware. The media's here, they're reporting on this. The reality is that we need to do better. And I thank you for pointing that out. And you know what? Keep doing that, because that's going to make a difference. So wherever you are, wherever you go, talk about this issue, encourage your parents to be mindful of it, and encourage them to also think about, you know, whether or not they're prepared to put some resources because it's, it's our collective problem. It's not necessarily just this government, it is governments in general. But it's the community at large that needs to embrace this problem and make change. So good for you. Thanks for being here. Great job. And I really appreciate the message. Keep talking about it. It's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Conley?
Thank you. I'm really impressed by you students doing this. This is something that, that is great when we're starting young. Because you guys will be involved in, in service for the rest of your life because you're involved now. And that's the important part. Everybody in Hamilton has to be a part of this. It's not just city council, but it's everybody. And you can do a lot in your communities to help poverty, even at a young age that you are. And I encourage you to get organized, do things in your, in your neighborhood to help somebody, some family. You have to tackle this one family at a time. There's a lot of things you can't do, but there's a lot of things you can do. And I know your teachers will encourage you. We have a long way to go in Canada, and probably most of the world has a long way to go to resolve poverty. It's not something you can just throw money at and it's resolved. It's, it's going to be a long, hard process. But you guys, starting at this age, is a very much an encouragement to see what the future could be like. And thank you very much, all of you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor, ahead.
Thank you. And I missed the presentation, but certainly hearing the accolades around this chamber, it sounds like you did a very good job. And I'm, I'm so proud of our youth in our community. When you look at St. Thomas More during Halloween, they, they continue bringing in the largest tonnage of food to help and assist and facilitate the food banks. They also send children to, some of the youth from the high schools into the Good Shepherd programs and that to experience the realities in regards to the, the people that have challenges every day with nutrition and food. We have, Holbrook has a great breakfast program, again, to deal with a lot of our youth that they're not getting the proper nutrition and food. So it is, it is an issue. And the thing about council is this is the grassroots governance in the world of politics. But there's other two levels of government. And I would only ask, when we continue educating the community on these issues, we still don't have a federal national poverty strategy. We don't have a national housing strategy. So clearly, it'd be great to, to start educating the other levels of government through these kinds of presentations to understand the, the real impacts it's having on our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor. And to be able to know of speakers, we'd like to thank you very much for coming down, making your presentation. We were very encouraged that you bring it from your level to our level. And we just keep making sure that we're hearing, everybody is hearing, in the City of Hamilton. And we also always want to make this the best place to raise a child. So thank you very kindly. I appreciate it.
Scott, I'd like to move that we formally invite them to the Queen's Park bus tour. So if I can move that, seconded by Councillor Green?
Absolutely. So you have the motion on?
Just move on myself, seconded by Councillor Green, that the students, as well as the staff, or any other participant within, within this process, be invited to our Queen's Park advocacy trip, which we're scheduling very soon.
Yes, seconded by Councillor Green.
That's correct.
All those in favor? Any against? It's carried. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. May I have a motion to receive the presentation? Councillor Green, Councillor Far, all those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Now, I would like to call upon Patrick Dean to provide the presentation respecting McMaster University.
Thank you very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today and to provide an update on McMaster University and its recent activities. I would just observe, too, it's an honor to follow the student delegation that just spoke to you. The university also shares their great concern with issues of child poverty in our city. And I'm proud to say that this is one of the priorities of many of our researchers to address. I thought today I would like to share some of our priorities for the next year and to talk about some of the wonderful initiatives we have underway in partnership with the city. Partnership with the city is an important issue for the university. I'm fond of telling students when they're getting to know the university and the city, that the university is here at the invitation of the city in the late 1920s. And it was the city brought us here, and that partnership has continued to be extremely strong. The university, with the help of the city and our community, has achieved an international reputation over the years. We remain one of only four universities in this country ranked in the world's top 100, and one of only two in the province to achieve this ranking. The other university is the University of Toronto. With over 16,000 universities in the world, this ranking is critically important as it helps us to recruit the best and the brightest students and faculty, excuse me, from around the world. So we take our commitment to and our partnership with the city and this community very seriously, and that's why I'm here today. I wanted to share with you an important priority for our institution. Over the next few years, having devoted considerable attention to enhancing the student experience and to building new connections into the community, thank you very much, we will be very focused over the next few years on building McMaster's research excellence. Our reputation was earned on the strength of that research and also the strength of our researchers, the people who take on new challenges every day to tackle some of the world's toughest R&amp;D issues right here in, in our city. Also important to us is working with industry. This has become increasingly important in, in recent years. And our goal is to move research into the marketplace, creating economic benefits for generations to come in our immediate community and beyond. Perfect example of this is our new Fraunhofer Project Centre for Biomedical Engineering and Advanced Manufacturing, known as BEAM. Fraunhofer, you may know, is Europe's largest application-oriented research organization. And we were very pleased that many of you could join us for our recent celebration to mark the establishment of BEAM, when we had many important to mark the establishment of BEAM, when we had many important officials from Fraunhofer with us. That is a project which could not have been possible without the support of city council, and for that, we are very grateful. BEAM will serve as a magnet for future economic growth and is a dynamic opportunity for Hamilton and Ontario to capture the economic value of the research done at McMaster. So where do we go next? Our researchers have achieved extraordinary success throughout the history of the university, and we're looking to combine this more and more with a heightened level of local community engagement. For us, the value of research is measured in a variety of ways, and one critically important measure is its impact on the broader community, whether that's right in our own backyard or around the world. Many of our researchers work very closely with community partners, and we're eager to build on those relationships and partnerships. If I could give you an example of this, I draw attention to our Rehabilitation Sciences Programme. Our students and faculty in this programme are making a real difference in Hamilton through their ties with clients in the areas of child health, employment and disability, and mental health and aging. Another great example is the work of our collaboratory for research on urban neighbourhoods, community health, and housing, which is dedicated to examining the complex interactions between housing, neighbourhoods, and health. So these are just two examples of how researchers across our faculties are working with various groups and directly with the city to assist in the development of neighbourhood strategies, and we look forward to building on them. I thought I should also take a moment to update you on the progress of two existing partnerships with the city. I'll start with our health campus across the street. We're very excited about the prospect of our opening ceremonies, which will take place there in the late spring. This building, as you all know, was made possible through a generous investment from city council, and we believe that it will be a great enhancement to the future of healthcare in Hamilton, and we remain and will always be grateful to you for your support in this project. The second update relates to the province's major capacity expansion proposal process. This past September, with support from the council, we were able to submit a proposal that included a commitment of land from the city. If we're successful in that competition, it will result in a major investment in our city from the province and help us to build our capacity in the downtown core and deepen our connections with the community. The university is keen to expand our existing capacity in the downtown core of Hamilton. We're also excited to move from the old courthouse into our new downtown centre location, which houses fifteen McMaster departments, including our Continuing Education Centre and 200 staff and faculty, and that will occur in March when we make that move. We're committed to being a partner in the city's redevelopment of its downtown core, further reinforcing our shared commitment to building a healthy, creative, and prosperous city in the future. I'm grateful to you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today and to share some of our priorities and plans for the next year. Before I end, I'd like to remind you all about our afternoon reception across the road at the art gallery from 4:30 to 6:30. It'll offer a great opportunity for the senior leadership of the university to come together with all of you, our partners in the city. We look forward to celebrating the successes we've accomplished working together and to thank you for your continued support. Thank you very much, Mr Chair.
Thank you, Mr Dean. Certainly appreciate your comments, and we have a couple questions from councillors, and councillor Marilla.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. Mr Dean, many thanks for your presentation. I must say that we've come a long way with respect to the university being part of a partnership with the city and expanding its role into neighbourhoods, which I must applaud you, and I look forward to that continued growth. On that point, through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, is, Mr Dean, with respect to our hub system, we have neighbourhood hubs, I was wondering how we can expand upon that and how we can really deduce it down to details of expanding your involvement with those hub communities at the grassroots levels, and where we can go from here in order to start that dialogue. So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, firstly, are you supportive of such an endeavour? And secondly, what do you think the best first step would be?
Thank you very much. To answer the basic question, yes, of course, indeed, we're very supportive of that notion. I think the mechanism that we'd do best to use to explore this and to build upon it is the network of campus community partnerships that we formalised last year. So over the last three years, in order to extend our reach into these, I suppose, critical areas of the city in which particular kinds of solutions are needed, we've built networks of partnerships with community organisations and so on. We now have that formalised as an operation within the university as well, so we could use that, I think, to build those connections and see what work needs to be done. Another thing I'd point out is that in, beginning in the spring, we're going to inaugurate a series of collaborative research community seminars that will be responsive to issues in the city, so that we could identify, for example, the question you just put, how to most effectively bring what we have to offer into those communities as a topic for discussion there, and we could hammer out some concrete strategies. So I wholeheartedly support the suggestion you were making, and we will pursue it.
Wonderful, thank you. And to you, Mr Deputy Mayor, what's really exciting and what I'd love to see is, for instance, the school itself and all the faculties associated with the school, social work, the medicine, it just goes on and on and on, where you can deduce it down to an actual part of the curriculum of having these students work in the neighbourhoods and providing actual grassroots services that's part of their actual degree. And I'm not sure if that will ever come to fruition, but I would love to see that being considered one day. So through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, your thoughts on that?
It is already happening in some courses. Some courses do provide credit for that kind of work students do. In the Bachelor of Health Sciences Programme, there is a requirement for students every year of the programme to do basically service learning commitments, and they receive credit for it at the end of the degree. My goal would be to see such a component as part of almost every degree programme. I remember saying five years ago, when I came to Hamilton for the first time, the university has a lot to offer in its researchers, but it also has 29,000 students, which if deployed as part of their educational process in the city, doing the kind of thing you're suggesting, could have a hugely beneficial effect on the city and would be hugely beneficial to the students, too. So I think we've actually come a long way in moving the notion of service learning as a credit-bearing thing to the front of people's consideration in the university. I think that there are far-reaching changes underway in the way in which we think about what a course of study should look like. It shouldn't all be in the classroom, it should be out in the workplace or in the community. So we're making progress.
And I'm so glad to hear that, because I don't think people recognise the power associated with what you just said, and how that can make a difference in every neighbourhood in the city, if not nationally, if every university took that approach. Lastly, as a personal plug of my daughter's, she's on your list, so she's doing well at the school, and I just wanted to mention that and give her a plug. Thank you.
Glad to hear it, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. We have councillor Whitehead, and then councillor Farrar.
Thank you, thanks for the presentation, Patrick. I can say quite openly and sincerely, in the length of time I've been with the city of Hamilton and working with McMaster University, and we did have, even on your predecessor, a lot of involvement with the North End and looking at nutrition, how it impacts on lower weight babies and et cetera. There's always sort of some integration in regards to what MAC does relative to the community, but not at the level that is taking place now under your stewardship and leadership. So I want to congratulate you on opening up the doors of what was seen as an insular university. When you were moving off to Kitchener and Burlington, and seeing that Hamilton was left in its wake and created some concerns, you've taken that and turned that 180 degrees in regards to McMaster's commitment to this community, and I want to thank you for that. The second piece is, we have 25 acres of land where the Shadok Hospital was, and you know, there's some great facilities there still, maybe tired, old, et cetera. The Shadok Foundation gave it up to the Hamilton Health Sciences, I guess there's a foundation there, and I met with Rob McIsaac. The lands were donated for the purpose of providing healthcare to the mountain residents. In fact, that's not what's going on, in fact, they're stripping it, and using the money to fund hospitals or services in the lower city. What I'd like to do, and I'm going to have that introduction with Rob, because no plans for that remaining 25 acres, it's supposed to be preserved. We might have to look at broadening the scope and having consultation with the community, but I think there's a great opportunity, working with the university on the research side, to utilise some of that property on a go-forward basis. So I was just, you know, you're here, I thought I'd take advantage to introduce that prospect to you. We'll probably have to sit down with Rob to see what Hamilton Health Sciences' needs are, but the mountain's got this wonderful area that's being underutilised and has been dedicated for healthcare services, so let's find and optimise the uses for those lands. So I challenge you to work with me to see how we can do that.
Thanks for raising it. I'd certainly be happy to talk about that and have a look at the possibilities.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr Dean, and councillor Farrar.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Mayor. I'm a proud MAC alum, who was never on any list. That said, I recall Dr Dean, I think the first time he spoke to this council, it was some years ago now, maybe five or so, and he spoke to his mandate of integrating and being part of this community, and certainly has come through in spades, and I couldn't be more proud to be part of a council, particularly, obviously, last term, moving motions that worked with that mandate. And we do obviously have a late spring opening across the road where we made a huge commitment as municipal leaders, Fraunhofer, as was mentioned, and other examples where we are partnering with MAC to achieve an end goal that will only benefit in increasing value to our citizens and the city, and I'm so pleased to be part of that. The ongoing research, the work in the neighbourhoods, transit studies that I've seen over the last four years, anything falling under the socio-economic umbrella that MAC has, how some way played a role in consultations or community meetings or town halls since I've been a councillor, has been extremely beneficial. And just from the neighbourhood perspective, the history department in the last two or three years has been working with our neighbourhoods, and what we did back in my day, which would have been around the late 80s, early 90s, was take walks with Professor Walter Peace. It is so much more now. Students of the history department are working on documented time capsule-type projects for these neighbourhoods, and I can tell you that the groups working with the students are really, truly happy to have that resource and to have essentially a curriculum come to them as a student project that obviously has some great benefits forever. So really proud of that, and of course, all of the work of McMaster student open circles in this community. So we've talked about this before, and you know all that. I would just like to add that what I have seen as well, and our neighbourhoods have seen since you're running the show or becoming president of McMaster University, this storied institution, world-renowned institution, is that more and more students have chosen to live, work, shop, and play in our downtown, and that might not have been the case, in greater numbers anyway, prior to you and the mandate of integrating with the community. And that speaks volumes on our economic impact of the 29,000 students who now have no fear of joining the community, taking part in the community, and like I say, and more and more are living. I hope one day we have an opportunity to talk about a residential campus in the near future, but right now, my question through you, Mr Deputy Mayor, to Dr Dean is, when do you suspect, you had alluded to our latest commitment, which is hopefully, potentially, some land to build another McMaster campus downtown, when do you expect to, are you shortlisted, and do you expect the province to offer an answer to your wonderful application for this great idea for Hamilton in the near future?
Thanks very much for all your comments, and also for that last question. We know that our proposal has made it through several stages of winnowing, so we're down to a much smaller number of proposals than was originally submitted. We know that they're now before a committee of deputy ministers at Queen's Park, and that's the group that will finally make a recommendation to the premier. It's difficult to say exactly when we will hear, I think our general expectation is that we'll hear sometime before the provincial budget. I think that's the way the government will expect to sequence us to make this announcement, and then to address broader economic questions in the budget. That's what I would guess at the moment. On the observation about the increase in the number of students wishing to remain in the city, I have to say, I'm really pleased with the success we've had there. The credit goes to many different sources. I think the more of the kind of service learning opportunities that councillor Marilla asked me about, we are able to offer, the more students who are not from the city of Hamilton will get to know the city, and therefore that'll maximise the likelihood of them staying. That's one good outcome of that, too. Another is, of course, that the MSU, the Students' Union, have worked really hard to take students off the campus and out of Westdale and into the rest of the city, and a lot of credit to the MSU for the very determined way in which they've gone about that. So they've had it as one of their goals, as it is one of the goals of the university, to raise the number of students who, once they've graduated, will stay in this community and contribute to it.
And finally, you had made reference to the health campus. I'll look forward to being part of that ceremony in the late spring. Councillors who were here last term will recollect that our commitment to, was in the neighbourhood, I believe, 20 million, we withhold 1 million as we await movement on the second parcel, we'll call it that for now, so the board of ed parking lot that is behind this campus. Can you offer, understanding it may be a sensitive real estate issue, and if there's not much you can add, I would appreciate and understand that, but can you offer an update on what's happening with that second phase, if anything, at this time, Dr Dean?
Unfortunately, I can't say much about it. I mean, our attention has been very much focused on the building as it's being constructed. I mean, we're mindful of that obligation, and we'll continue to work on that. I'll report as soon as I can.
Look forward to it, always look forward to your updates, and thank you for your commitment to Hamilton.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, councillor, and no other questions, Mr Dean. And we'd like to thank you for bringing the update on McMaster University's activities, and look forward to seeing you again.
Thank you very much, everybody.
May I have a motion to receive the presentation? Councillor Whitehead, councillor Connolly, all those in favour?
Carried.
Any against? Carried. Next, we have, I would like to call upon William Warnick to speak respecting the implementation of super mailboxes by Canada Post.
Everybody likes Charlie Farkinson, so I've got my Charlie Farkinson attire on today. I have a hat up there that goes well, so. My name is Bill Warnick, I'm retired from Canada Post, I retired a long time ago, but I was well-known in the post office for knowing my rules and my regulations, and I felt rather pleased about that, because I worked hard at it. I was a director for the Ontario branch of the Canadian Post Masters and Assistance Association, and I was also involved at one time in Cup W. I put together a presentation for the councillors, and you've seen it. However, last night, I, for the first time, got a chance to read the report, and the report covers a lot of the same things that I had mentioned in my report to you. So I'm not going to talk about those so much, I'd rather deal with the issues that your report does not deal with. Back in 1979, 1980, thereabouts, Canada Post attempted to close all the post offices in Canada, that was their intent, every post office in Canada would be closed. And as a member of Canadian Post Masters and Assistance Association, we were rural post offices, we put up a fight, we put up a tremendous fight. We fought with city councils, we fought with municipal councils, and in some cases, we had to fight with them to get them on board. We had to get them to see the harm that Canada Post was doing by closing these offices. My grey hair sometimes affects my memory, but I believe we had something like 1,790 rural post offices in the country back in 1985. By the time Canada Post gave up their fight to close rural post offices, and they did give up, we won. There were roughly 1,700 rural post offices, so we did lose about 80 to 90 post offices, but we saved 1,700. And we had And we had councillors saying to us, and I'm going to get this before the day is out, I've already had it this morning, and I respect who told me, this is not a municipal matter, this is a federal matter, you've got to deal with this at the federal level. I just had Wayne Marsden tell me, it is not a federal matter, it is a municipal matter. I've had, I know, I see an eye turning here. I'm not saying I know what it is. I'm simply saying, the frustration of a taxpayer, I've gone to municipal people who have said it's federal, it's provincial, I've gone to provincial who say it's municipal, it's federal, I've gone to federal people who say it's municipal, it's provincial. I'm a taxpayer. You know, I don't know whose issue it is. But one thing I do know is that 15 years ago, the same argument took place. And 15 years ago, we got everybody on board. Now, Counselor Marilla mentioned a couple minutes ago about that we only have, but I please try to know that, I don't remember exactly what he said, but you do. He talked about the 2% for poverty, that city has to deal with poverty, and that it's a provincial, federal issue, not, in general, a municipal issue. And yet, in the next breath, he's talking about taking a bus to Queen's Park and inviting these children to go with him. That's what I want you to do. It may not be your issue, but get on board with us, take a bus, arrange with other municipalities to take a bus to Ottawa. You come with us and the citizens to Ottawa to stop this. It's election year, I want you to forget what party you support, because I'm sure each and every one of you have a favorite party. This is not the time to support your Liberals or your Conservatives or your NDP or whoever. This is the time to support your people who are the closest to the pavement to you, and that is us. I was very disappointed to see that this report does not say we're not going to do it, it talks about how we're going to do it. I sent my many, many emails to each and every one of you over the last little while. I got comments back like, I agree with you, you're right on, go for it. Never in any of my emails did I ever say, let's adjust what Canada Post is doing. I said, let's stop what Canada Post is doing. So for those councillors who agreed with that part, at the risk of putting them at odds with the ones who don't, I need your support to convince these other councillors that we can take a bus, we can do things, we can stop this, we do not have to cooperate with them. Yes, the law might be clear what it is now, but laws change. We change laws. I can't do it myself, but you can do it. I know of other councillors that I've dealt with to some extent, and they are in the same boat you are. They can't do it alone. You know, there's this term in the union world that divide and conquer. And that is what Canada Post is doing. It picks each little municipality and it knows that you will not take the next step. It knows that you won't join with Oakville, you won't join with the other ones, you won't take a bus to Ottawa, you won't make it a big issue. You would just consult, you would just deal with what you have to deal with because there's nothing more you can do. There's everything you can do. When we started the fight against the rural post offices, we were told, you can't stop it, it's impossible to stop it. We got out of the box and we thought of ways to stop it. We created an organization called Rural Dignity, which traveled across the country and met with mayors, members of parliament, councillors all across the country. And we stopped, stopped what we couldn't stop. So today when I hear you saying, you can't stop it, I just go back 20 years and say, we did then and we will do it again, but we have to have you on board, we have to have you out of the box. You can't stay in this box and stop it. And you can't, you can't allow it to happen. Now, we talked about property values going down and up the corner of my place, they're going to be putting in super mailboxes. And I'm not even an award that's mentioned. The owner of that property's already been told. And our word hasn't even been mentioned, but he's already been told by Canada Post, his property is designated for a community mailbox. He bought his house a year or so ago. We've heard all kinds of rumors about what he paid for it. We understand he paid way too much because he was Mississauga and it looked cheap down here. So if he paid $375,000, which is the rumor, you put a community mailbox in front of that house, it's now 350 or 325. That is if you can get anyone to take a look at it. Drive by that house, see that community mailbox there? I'm not interested. Real estate people need to get involved in this because as we bring the value of houses down, as Counselor Collins mentioned to me last week, we might bring the tax base down here, but we'll bring the tax base up here. So the city doesn't lose anything. I, if I'm down here, I'm now paying $50,000 or $100 more for my municipal tax so I can get less delivery or less service from the federal government. You can't wash your hands of that. I'm your closest taxpayer, I'm your closest constituent. You can't wash your hands of the fact that, you know, I pay more and get less from it, I pay more municipal, I get less federally and say, well, that's not our fault. It is your fault if you don't get out and try and fight, stop it. Real estate people, they should be involved. They should be involved because if every house drops 10%, that's 10% less income they're going to get when they sell your house, based on the rates they sell. You're going to lose. You're going to lose because you'd sell permits for housing. Lawyers are going to lose because they are going to lose because there's not as much money in a house. So therefore, instead of getting $35,000 for selling a house, they'll get $33,000 for selling a house. So the property value goes down, but you still get the same taxes because you raised, I don't even know if you use the word mill rate anymore, but you raised the level accordingly. So you can say it's not hurting us, but it is hurting you. And it's hurting the person who is closest to you. That's me and these people here and these people here and the people walking on the street. Those are the people being hurt. So I'm asking you, don't sit here and just vote and say, I'm done. Do what Counselor Marilla is doing with the poverty issue. Get organized with other cities, get some buses to go to Ottawa if you need to be. And I don't know who's going to fund those buses or how, but we figured it out 25 years ago and we can figure it out again today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Warnock. And we have a couple councillors that would like to ask some questions, and Counselor Whitehead.
I'll go second.
Counselor Marilla.
Thank you. Mr. Deputy Mayor, just on a couple of points, sir, I think that we need to clarify. With respect to jurisdictional issues, and I'm going to go to Janice, who's our legal person, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Janice. With respect to jurisdiction, who's responsible for this decision related to Canada Post?
Who is responsible for Canada Post?
No, I'm asking, I'm sorry, I was trying to get a drink of water here when you were talking.
So Canada Post, under their regulation, has exclusive jurisdiction with respect to placement of their mailboxes.
Okay, and who's granted them, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that power or authority?
Federal government.
Okay. So it's clearly a federal government decision and responsibility, and it has absolutely nothing to do with the city of Hamilton, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So, yes, the regulation makes it very clear that Canada Post has the exclusive jurisdiction over placement of their boxes for delivery of mail.
Okay. So what role, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, does a municipality play in this entire charade? Because in essence, we really can't prevent it from happening, we're in essence only in a position to try to mitigate the impact, is that correct? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yes, through the deputy mayor, yes, that's correct. The municipality has jurisdiction under the municipal framework to regulate the infrastructure that goes into the road right-of-way.
Okay. So we have regulatory responsibility, but we don't have a decision to accept or deny or reject the idea. Is a good analogy to this, not too dissimilar to, for instance, the licensing department and restaurants as an example, where we can't prevent a restaurant from opening up, but we can re-regulate them, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor? Would that be a fair analogy? I'm sure there are hundreds of them, but...
Yes, through the deputy mayor, that's a good analogy. The municipality cannot prohibit, but it can regulate.
Right. So just so that people aren't confused publicly, that's probably the easiest analogy to make, is that if we for whatever reason don't want an Italian restaurant to open up, we don't have the power to do that. But we do have the power to regulate restaurants, public inspection and so on. So to suggest that we have any power or authority to prevent this from happening is inaccurate and it needs to be addressed accordingly. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, one question with respect to municipalities in Ontario. Ontario, we as a municipality, we're a creature of Ontario, so we really have no constitutional authority or bearing or rights. So the province can eliminate us with a stroke of a pen. What role does Ontario play in the federation, in partnership with the federal government, in attempting to prevent this from happening?
Bashing our legal...
Janice, yes.
So this goes back to basically the BNA Act, which is the basis of our constitution, and this is the division of powers between the federal government and the provincial governments. And delivery of mail falls squarely within the federal jurisdiction and property falls squarely within the provincial jurisdiction.
So clearly, the province has no jurisdiction over this matter either, is that correct to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
That is correct.
Okay. So now what we've deduced, just so that we separate fiction and focus in on the facts, the only level of government responsible for this item is the federal government and not the province of Ontario and definitely not the province, oh, sorry, the city of Hamilton, which is the creation of the province. So in essence, we need to focus in on the facts. The fact is, this council has already made a position quite clear in rejecting these mailboxes. Counselor Collins brought forward a motion, Counselor Whitehead and DeValle worked on a similar initiative months later. So, sir, with all due respect, you're trying to convert to convert it, we agree with you. The problem we're faced with is we can't change the reality of the fact that we have no power over it. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to Janice, how can we mitigate this issue, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, so that we're not in a position firstly, where it's going to cost us any additional money and just compounds our downloading issues? And how are we going to negotiate that with Canada Post to ensure that they're going to pay their fair share in doing what legally they're shoving down our throats on this item? Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
So right there, Counselor, and I understand we have a report coming in at 8.1. So I think that those are the questions we're actually, what you're asking, how we're going to, what our plan is or this council's plan is, instead of the...
So I guess my point is, I'm trying to separate, because it's a pretty convoluted issue based on what I've heard today. So we're trying to firstly determine who is responsible, how we're going to mitigate, because we can't deceive the public by suggesting that we have any authority over this matter.
Totally agree, Counselor, just that one is being a presentation of...
It's all relevant.
...of a report, and then the other one will come, your answer will come.
Yeah. But it's all relevant to the presenter. So, sir, so what we're in a position now, understanding that we can't prevent it from occurring, but what we can do is mitigate the financial impact as well as any neighborhood quality of life impacts. And that's really the thrust of our jurisdiction and what we can do. So we need, rather than getting confused and distracted, because that's exactly what Canada Post wants us to do, is focusing on what we can change to basically make a bad situation better. And that's what I'm focused on and I thank you for your time. Thank you.
And I thank you, Counselor, and I thank Mr. Warnock also. I'm sure he'll be staying around to see what's held, this is going to finish in 8.1, but we do have a...
May I respond to, I don't know if I may even turn up, but may I respond?
You've made your presentation, so if you have questions, you'd be able to, there was no question there. So Counselor Whitehead, you might be able to...
Counselor, ask me a question.
Thank you. I appreciate the presentation and I'm glad that we clarified who has responsibility. Maybe the clerk needs to help me with this one, but we did pass a resolution, took a position. That resolution was for, I believe, Federation of Canadian Municipalities as well as all the local MPs and the federal government, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, that is correct.
So we have taken a letter and taken the initiative to cover off the politics or through the governance side of it. Mr. Warnock, did you understand that?
You had asked or suggested a bus to Ottawa, and I guess what I'm informing you...
Talking to me?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir, I thought you were talking to this lady here. I am sorry.
So we have taken initiative through a motion that said we don't support the ending the direct delivery of mail. We passed a resolution and sent it to the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, which is an umbrella group that represents interests of municipalities across the country to lobby the federal government. We've also sent a copy of that resolution to all the MPPs and MPs, and we sent it to obviously the Prime Minister of Canada. So we started that political process in regards to having them hopefully review the decision made by Canada Post and certainly all the regulations that empower them to do so. So I wanted to make sure you're informed on that. The second piece, which is a great suggestion, and I think when you hear an answer from Mr. Marsden that suggests that it's not a federal issue, well, he's wrong. But I think that we need to do a better job as a community and take advantage of the media and live stream to tell our community that the MPs oversee the federal regulations and power Canada Post to do this to our community and that they, the MPs need to stand up to the plate. So we need to ask our residents of this community that are impacted to contact all MPPs in this community to force the pressure on the federal government. So that's again supplementary to your request of taking a bus to Ottawa, which might be an expensive venture. This would be another way of driving that message that you want us to drive. The question I have is on the housing piece, because I've been raising this interest as well, and I see, I don't know if you enclose, or maybe it was QP that did this, value of homes. Cup W, okay, but this is a question I've been raising for a while. And we know, for example, in real estate, you know, some people will make decisions on what they'll buy, and the scope of people's interest in a house will be based on certain criteria. Some love pools, so that might be an enhancement, but others may not. So that might eliminate anyone that doesn't want a pool. But it's pretty clear, without a doubt, that there's going to be people that look at a super mailbox adjacent to their property that will fall from any interest in purchasing those households. Would you agree with that?
Definitely, I would agree with that.
And that's in saying it won't be as a competitive process in the bidding, therefore the value of the home may drop. Would you agree with that?
I would agree with that and I would agree that it would be a domino effect.
And do you agree that that cost should be borne by Canada Post?
Yes, by all means. In fact, I think that is, thank you, I think that is one thing that you can do. If Canada Post devalues my property, my municipal property, the property that I own in your municipality, I lose $50,000 or $60,000, who's there for me to recover that $50,000 or $60,000? You might say, well, you know, we give you a tax break, but that's a long way from getting me my money back. So yes, Canada Post, I believe, should be held accountable for the loss of my personal property.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
Thank you. And Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Bill, thank you very much. You're obviously a wealth of information and you and I have been corresponding for better part of a year, including last fall during the municipal election campaign into now. Bill, without any exact quotes, our three local members of parliament from Hamilton proper, the theme of their responses to you, because I know you have a large network of people you deal with, and given your past knowledge and work experience as well, the theme of what they were responding to you was that really contact City Hall, Mr. Deputy Mayor, through to Bill?
In the case of Wayne Marsden...
In the microphone, please, Bill, just a little closer to the microphone.
In the case of Wayne Marsden specifically, I got a phone call from him about 2 o'clock on Sunday afternoon. I think the Super Bowl is on. No, I'm wrong, it was Monday. It was Monday he called me. Super Bowl wasn't on, or one of the times. Super Bowl wasn't on, I went to talk to him, even him. And he was very clear that this was a municipal issue. Now, how he explained that? Now, why, you keep shaking your head, but it's not me. I didn't say it, okay? I'm only repeating. Don't shoot the messenger here. His logic to that was that the NDP do not have a sufficient majority to do anything about it. The Liberals and the NDP together do not have a sufficient majority to do anything about it. The people who can do something about it are the people that where the pavement reaches the road. I think that was his expression. I've used it a couple of times since. But where the pavement hits the road and that is the municipal people. They can do it in a number of different ways. Now, I don't think we got into the different ways. But you will recall that I sent all of you a newspaper article about a month and a half ago that Mr. Marston had a conversation, I believe, in Parliament with the Prime Minister. And the Prime Minister told him that the Government of Canada has nothing to do with Canada Post as it is an arms-length Crown Corporation. I have to take you back to when it became a Crown Corporation. If there's anybody here from Cup W who has been around as long as I was, they will be able to tell you why it became a Crown Corporation. It did not become a Crown Corporation because the Government of Canada wanted an arms-length Crown Corporation. It became a Crown Corporation because of members of Cup W insisted upon it in order to separate their employer from the government so that every political, every decision wasn't being made politically. They wanted it separated. They did not want any connection to the Government of Canada. You will recall at that point we had a Postmaster General who was a minister. We no longer have a Postmaster General. I think we come under, or Canada Post, I think now comes under transportation. What's that got to do with Canada Post? Canada Post is one of the very, very few profit, for-profit corporations. It was designed to be arms-length. The Prime Minister, even up to today, says it's arms-length. So if it's arms-length, it can't have it both ways. It can't say, we are the federal government when we want to be the federal government and we're not the federal government when you don't want me, or when you want me to be. That's, I think you've got to get your legal people to sit down and figure out what is Canada Post? Where does it fit? And its responsibility and rights as a federal Crown Corporation? Does it have the same right as the St. Lawrence Seaway, which is a non-for-profit? Does it have the same right as many? I can't even think of the Crown Corporations that do not have a for-profit clause. Canada Post does. Canada Post was intended, it was absolutely intended to be separate from the government. I don't know if any of the other Crown Corporations were ever created out of that background.
Bill, I think, I appreciate the thoroughness of your answer. I think everything you have said reiterates at what level of government this really truly belongs and could be decided upon with the current government's support and/or the government corresponding with the Crown Corporation. Management is here, they're a delegation. On behalf of many seniors in my community, many disabled, many Trillium Award winners for their properties that care about the value of their properties, I'll be asking them some pointed questions in terms of snow clearing, graffiti, litter, all those type of maintenance issues. So lastly, Bill, Oakville, I think, came first in the province of Ontario about three years ago. Have you had any chit-chats with any counterparts, either through Oakville or other municipalities and friends or contacts you may have in other municipalities in terms of down-the-road type of thing, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
No, I have not. In fact, until last week's, when I had a meeting with Audemar Morrell or Counselor Morrell and Counselor Collins, I was feeling very powerful that we were going in the direction I wanted to go.
Anytime anybody meets with those two comes away with that feeling. Carry on, carry on. Please, carry on.
I want those two gentlemen to know that I respected their information. I really did. They were kind to me. I have no disagreement with, I disagree with them. Okay, but I will vote for them if they are in my riding, Mr. Green. If they're in my riding. They're fine people. But that was the first pushback I'd had. Any conversations I had with you? There was never this, you know, well, we can't do anything about it because it's a federal thing. You gave me, without those words being said, you gave me encouragement to move on in the way in which I was moving on.
And I appreciate you being here today, Bill.
And if anybody read the emails I sent, and I hope you did, you know, you don't know, but I know and those people who emailed me back said, you're right. Now, I'm assuming, they didn't say I was 70% right or 50% right. I'm assuming they read the entire email and said I was right. Nowhere in that, any of my emails did I ever suggest any consultation with Canada Post on these mailboxes. It was no mailboxes, period. The end. And yet I had, and I'm not going to point you out, that'll be up to you to identify yourself if you choose. But at least three or four, five, I believe, came back with, you're right.
Right.
I felt very good about that until I met Sam and Chad.
Right. So, Bill, thank you.
Sorry, Counselors Sam and Chad. You two were the ones that made my life miserable.
Mr. Warnock? Mr. Warnock, my mic is on. My self-esteem is taking a hit right now because you keep focusing on these two guys to my left. But anyway, that's okay. I'm all right. So, Bill, at the end of the day, there's a cost issue as well that our solicitor is going to speak to later on, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Because if Canada Post is only offering up $50, which may be standard policy, but our report's talking about potentially 10 times that cost, everything factored in from the municipality, lighting, signage, traffic, no parking signs, public works, crews, et cetera. We need to get some answers from them as well today. So, Bill, thank you very much for your attendance. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And if I could give the chair to Mr. Mayor? And Mr. Warnock, I just want to thank you. I have been listening to your emails. In fact, I agree with a lot of what you've been saying and I've been working with our legal department to get some of those answers that you raised because I have the same beliefs. However, it come to my surprise when I met our legal department, the authority that the Canada Post has over the municipal government, it just amazed me. So we're trying to come up with a plan that will, we in the city of Hamilton can at least have some options or tools that we might go forward with when the report comes out and this council make a decision. So we have, and I know I'm speaking for myself personally because I have emails that, many, many, from Ward 7, that I've sent to not only the Canada Post, but I also send them to our MPs. And I went to Wayne Marston in Ottawa and had a chat with him, okay, about the issue. And I know I've talked to MP Chris Charlton and I know MP Dave Christopherson. Every one of them have said something in the House in Ottawa opposing this. However, they're not getting any media attention in this city of Hamilton. And it wasn't till the Hamilton news that actually broke it out when I sent them out a media release, what we're going to do, that people started to pay attention. And then it was slow until it actually came into a reality that's coming this spring. Totally agree with you about Canada Post how they've brought their action forward. I'm really happy the representatives are here to make their presentation because there was no consulting. It was a mail-out and it was coming back and then it was dictatorship of where the boxes were going. That's what it became, it's a reality. All the fancy words that they give to the actual people that they mailed out, anybody can play with words. So we get it, we understand it. We're trying to go forward with it and I'm hoping you stay around for the rest of the presentations from the other people and to report that we're going to go forward. So, and that's
Just in closing, I hope you'll keep this. One last thought and that is, take a serious look at what kind of corporation Canada Post is. Does it fit into the same? Does it be, is it a part of the Canadian government in the same sense that another department might be that could force itself on you? I think if you look hard enough, you'll find it does not have the same rights. Please, look at that.
Thank you, Bill. Counselor, I have Counselor Collins and the chair is back to you.
Thank you, Counselor Collins. Yep, thanks. Mr. Chairman and Bill, I just wanted to thank you. I know you've spent days and days of your time and your expertise and your knowledge in trying to fight something. I think that most people, by and large, the majority of people who not only live in our city but across the country agree with your position in terms of the way that this has been handled and the impact it's going to have on community. I would suggest that no one needs to get on a bus and go anywhere. What I would suggest is that people need to stay local and get involved somehow in the federal elections, excuse me, that's going to happen later this year. And this all boils down to the government and their actions and their decisions as well as those at Canada Post who take their direction, I think we both know from the government. The government has given their tacit approval by remaining silent and I think by and large the opposition parties have been relatively silent on this as well. And it shocked me that no one's picked up the torch and has run with it, knowing it's in a federal election year and made their position quite clear. So we've certainly heard critiques coming from certain corners. But for as much media attention as the opposition leaders get, both Mr. Mulcair and Mr. Trudeau, I've been relatively shocked at the fact they haven't come out with a clear plan that says if we're elected, we're going to reverse this decision and we're going to go to whatever the alternative is. That hasn't happened. And so I'd suggest there's no need to get on a bus and go anywhere to protest. Stay local. Find out who's opposing this in the federal election and help the respective candidate who you think is going to be able to accomplish that. So I wanted to thank you because, again, you have, as soon as this decision was made, you were the first one out of the gate in terms of recognizing that there are problems associated with it and you're seeking change. But you've come to a forum here where this, as I think was clearly illustrated by others, we don't have the ability to implement that change.
You're trying hard to do it anyhow.
Thank you, Counselor. And we have Mayor Eisenberger.
I was just going to move to receive the presentation and thank Bill, but I understand that Counselor Whitehead has a question. You can answer, but I'll ask that question of each and every one that presents. It's my understanding that we, this country, taking home delivery away from the residents, the taxpayers of this great country, of the G8, we're the only country that's actually taking the service away. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding. And just for a little bit of trivia, do you know that the first rural route took place between Hamilton and Dundas? The very first time they delivered mail in Canada by rural route was here, in Dundas? I just had to throw that in. But I have heard what you have said. I have no knowledge of what you have said.
Try and get that verified. But I think it's pretty significant for people watching, for a very progressive country, for us to be taking away a service that has been delivered in, you know, the G8 is remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And Mr. Warnock, thank you very much. Thank you, councillor. And Mr. Warwick, thank you very much. We have a motion to receive by the mayor, second by councillor Green. Councillor Marilla, all those in favor?
Carry it.
I'm not sure, Madam Chair, I think there's a little mistake because we have a request to change the agenda for Mr. Langley today. And it's not here, so.
My apologies. It is Mr. Marilla. Call Mr. Langley forward, sir.
So we have Terry Langley from the Canadian Union Postal Workers come down?
Thank you, council, for the opportunity to speak with you again. When we last spoke, it was, I believe, September, and I'd made a presentation at that time on the proposed Canada Post plan to eliminate door-to-door delivery. And from that discussion that we had at that time, council put forward their request for the report that's presented here today, that's before council today. And now, just to answer the one question, yes, Canada Post is the only country in the G8 to eliminate door-to-door delivery. And Canada Post is doing so at a time when they are very profitable. And in fact, are was the only public institution, public postal institution, that actually was making profits. So when all the other ones are getting by and maintaining home delivery, Canada Post is eliminating it even though they are profitable. So my concern, and addressing the issues and a lot of what was discussed with the previous speaker, and the concerns that he raised. Coming out of the report, it's conceded by the legal department that this is a federal issue and Canada Post has the jurisdiction to make that call on putting the community mailboxes forward. But the reality as well out of this report is that council has some jurisdictional authority to set up requirements, some obstruction, some issues to hold Canada Post as a federal institution, making these changes accountable for the costs associated. And that's one of the key issues that I see in this report. There's a huge cost associated with implementing the elimination of door-to-door delivery. So for context on that, and reviewing the facts, Canada Post revenues have in fact increased $90 million. Canada Post recorded over $84 million in profits for the first three quarters of 2014, which is a far cry from the projected $274 million in losses that they originally anticipated and used as part of their catalyst to justify the change that they want to make. So the reality is, we're still waiting the fourth quarter numbers from Canada Post, but they've already said that their parcel business, they had growth in their parcel business beyond their expectations. So that's growing beyond what even they thought it was going to be. Coming out of the report, and when we've crunched the numbers, it seems clear that this is about a $2 million download cost on the municipality of Hamilton for Canada Post to implement these changes that they want to implement, even though they're making profits and their justification presented is not supported by the numbers, their own numbers. It's not there. So this is in fact a download from a profitable federal institution onto municipalities. And Canada Post said, the reason we have to make these changes is because we don't want to become a financial burden on the Canadian taxpayer. Well, the reality is, Canada Post has generated $1.6 billion in profits in taxes and dividends for the Canadian taxpayer. They're downloading these costs now onto municipalities to further those financial gains. And the reality is, Canada Post, under the Canada Post Act, when it was put in in '81, Canada Post's only mandates under the Canada Post Act were financial self-sufficiency, not profitability, financial self-sufficiency, any improvements or any gains made above that, any profits were to be channeled back into improved wages, benefits, working conditions for its employees, and improved service to the public. Canada Post is profitable, but they're not improving service to the public. They're deteriorating that service to the public by what they're doing now. So municipalities have some jurisdictional authority. Conceding that Canada Post has the authority to decide that they're going to do this, municipalities have the authority to make sure that the municipalities, the costs are not borne by the public taxpayer. And to our position, this is how council, if council's looking for a mechanism to address Canada Post and these costs, this is the mechanism by which councils, and Hamilton would be in the forefront of that, can set up this cost-prohibitive obstruction to the post office because there's too many additional associated costs to implement the change. That's what this report, as I take from it, is able to do. Council can do that. So some of the other issues that I want to address as well are the issues of bylaw changes. And that's one of the things that comes out of the report. You cannot put in a change that's saying from your report that community mailboxes cannot be installed. But council can address a lot of the issues that were already mentioned, issues of lighting, public safety, public nuisance. Canada Post has a horrible track record around the litter and the garbage collection around community mailboxes. And in Canada Post's own report, they said, we are not going to put a recycling bin next to community mailboxes because that would encourage the residents to discard their ad mail rather than take it home and review it. And that's not going to be something that's going to endear Canada Post to its customers. So we've seen, as in the document, the Fact vs. Fiction booklet that I presented back in September, we see the track record of what Canada Post has done as far as that goes. That is the extent of the garbage and litter that is collected around community mailboxes. So the issue of depreciated property value is a huge issue. Somebody buys a new home now in a residence that they're having a community mailbox put in place, they do so with the understanding that that mailbox is going to be there. It was known for that. I'm buying it knowing that. Somebody bought their property now and are having that property now have a community mailbox put next to it, they have significant depreciated property value. And when Canada Post was first confronted about this issue by the union, their response was, we're not in the real estate business. So they don't have any concern about that. The other issue, pardon me, of associated potential costs for the community, there's huge rings out west where they have a lot of community mailboxes of theft. This is an additional cost borne by the community in policing and addressing those issues. That's nuisance. That's not public safety. The issues of lighting are other bylaws that the council can address to address safety issues for the protection of their residents. These are additional associated costs that can be borne by the post office that they have to take a second look at moving forward with their plan. The other concern that I have, and I think it's touched on as well in the report, is the public dialogue, consultation with the community on this. The only issues that the community was allowed to speak on were aesthetic issues of what kind of graphics they want in their community mailboxes and whether they want three or whether they want five community mailboxes in one site. That was the extent of what the community was allowed. That's not open public dialogue. Canadians own the post office. They have to have a right to say what happens to the post office, especially when it's making the profits it's making now. Canada Post doesn't exist to make bonuses for its executives and to provide low postage rates for large corporations. It's a public institution. In Canada, there has been a post office as long as there's been a Canada. It's one of the founding fundamental institutions that have been a part of this country since the very beginning. Canadians deserve better. They deserve at least to have a say in the decisions that are being made around that. Canada Post, again, as I say, doesn't exist for corporate profits. It doesn't exist for management bonuses. It exists to provide a service for the Canadian public. That is what they're there for. With few exceptions, again, Canada Post has been profitable and generated revenues for Canadians every year, almost every year, with the exception of the year they locked out their employees and they lost a pay equity lawsuit. Where is the justification in the face of these numbers for Canada Post to make these changes? Where is the true public dialogue and the decisions affecting something that Canadian taxpayers own and should have a true and rightful say examining all options open to them, like Canada Post buried four-year study on postal banking, which would generate huge profits by their own study. Only through freedom of information was that revealed. They closed the door on that one, and they've never been able to justify it. So whose interest is it? Big banks or the Canadian public? Canada Post said they need to make these changes so they don't, again, become a burden on Canadian taxpayers. By the report, we've seen, again, $2 million that the residents of Hamilton are being asked to absorb, in addition to any other ongoing costs through policing, through signage, through excessive or increased traffic on roadways that need to be maintained and serviced. All these issues are very important. We heard a really excellent presentation on poverty first off here. Out of the depot on the Hamilton Mountain that has started their restructure to eliminate door-to-door delivery, it's an anticipated 50% job loss. And that's just one of the depots in Hamilton proper. That's significant deterioration. How is the community sustainable when a corporation already turning profits and continually turning profits every quarter that their last reports have come down, justifying that type of job elimination and that type of download cost on the community? That's not just and right. So here today, I do implore council to very seriously and very carefully examine this report with all the options that are detailed in it at your disposal. And I ask you on behalf of the 1,300 postal workers that I represent and as a resident of Hamilton, to draw the line in the sand and hold Canada Post truly accountable for the costs of their decisions. When the facts detailed in the report, or excuse me, with the facts detailed in the report, you have an opportunity now to be a beacon for all municipalities across this country to demand true accountability from Canada Post and the federal government regarding decisions being made that have not been validated by their own financial numbers and that have not truly been consulted upon and truly have an adverse effect on all citizens. So that is my report, and that is what I ask council to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Langley, and we appreciate you coming here. We have a couple councillors with some questions. Councillor Whitehead?
Thank you for coming forward and making the presentation. I asked a question earlier, and maybe you can provide clarity on the G8 question, whether we're, as a result of this move by Canada Post, are we one of the few countries in the G8 that's taking away service?
Yeah, I did comment on that, actually, off the start of my remarks. We are the only country in the G8 that's doing that, as well as being the only postal institution for much of the time, maybe even now, that was actually profitable. So how can we not sustain home delivery, door-to-door delivery, when we're making profits, other ones are losing money, and they're still maintaining that door-to-door delivery? It's not validated.
Do you also agree that the Canada Post, by virtue of the regulations and Crown, has a monopoly in regards to the business?
They have some monopoly on it. Remailing, international mailing, the laws were changed on that by the federal government. And, you know, and just as you bring that point up, councillor, that's one of the things where Canada Post wants to try and justify its projected losses. The government itself is who changed the laws that allowed private mailing to get into remailing, international mailing. But on, within Canada proper, yes, it is an exclusive monopoly within the post office at this time.
Well, I mean, they're the ones that own the super mailboxes.
Correct.
That's a monopoly. Is anyone else building super mailboxes?
No.
Thank you. The other issue, and I think you touched, and I haven't actually seen the act that sets out the mandate for the Crown Corporation, you sort of tried to distinguish delivery of service versus profitability. Is there clear language in exactly what the mandate of Canada Post is?
Yes, and I'm giving you the paraphrased version of it. But those three mandates are financial self-sufficiency, and then from that, any profits go into improved wages, benefits, working conditions, again, for the employees, and improved service to the Canadian public.
Is there any social obligation inherent in the mandate of Canada Post?
Not as a social obligation, not that I know of specifically to that language. I know that Canada Post, in its current incarnation with door-to-door delivery, has a huge social impact on the community. And there have been many news reports citing examples where postal workers have stopped break-ins, contacted the police immediately, where there were people that were in distress, elderly that were at home on the floor incapacitated, that the postal worker noticed that there was a problem there, there was an issue. That is a very integral part of the community, the fabric that postal workers have brought to communities, and that will be lost.
Well, I don't know if you've heard the debate, but that's one of my biggest concerns with the large senior population and seniors that lost their spouses, their partners, that are living alone at home. And the one relief they have, and they talk to me about, is the fact that they got their post guy that comes, or woman that comes to the door, and they have a child with them, and there's that interaction. And I can guarantee you, if something, or that person didn't come to the door, that Canada Post person would make the call out of concern. And so that's just another mechanism that will lose in regards to those people living in isolation.
Absolutely. There is a moral obligation, I feel, by what Canada Post has done, again, in its history, that that will be lost. And I think that, again, without the financial necessity, you bring up a very good point.
The federal government provides the tool to allow the Crown Corporation to stand as a Crown Corporation, and provides the regulatory body that enables them, empowers them, to do what they're doing in regards to using right-of-ways and so forth. Is that correct?
Yes.
The federal government also made decisions, and I made this comparison before, in deregulation of smaller airports across Canada, which has now completely left, and basically, in some cases, bankrupt communities by isolating them completely. They deregulated bus service, federal government, again, creating isolation for the small northern Ontario, or northern communities, or smaller communities in rural Ontario, or even across the country. So I remember the pushback there, and this is an example where regulations, if it's not thought through, have social consequences. Do you believe that this decision will have social consequences?
Oh, absolutely. Well, again, to the issue that I was addressing around community issues of the elderly, seniors, there's the people that are homebound, that have disability issues, all of that is affected by the community, or is part of the community. The post office, the postal, the letter carrier, has always been that often one connection that united many people in that community, that brought that community together, and they had very close relationships, close ties with people, and they checked up on them. They made sure that they were okay. They advised them of, you know, what to do if they were going away and traveling, all those kinds of issues. That personal contact, that fabric of society will be gone, at least as far as the post office and what a letter carrier does.
My wife and I went for a long walk last Saturday through a new subdivision in Long Rymel Road up to, actually, we went to the Target. But we took pictures, I took pictures, of the super mailboxes that existed on that route. And in those super mailboxes, they were adjacent to sidewalks with no setback at all from the sidewalk, and they were sitting on ice mounts. Now, one of them were clear of ice. And we're not talking a thin layer. We're talking ice mounts. So I took several pictures of several, not just one, everyone along that path, and this is a week ago. It was not the new storm that created it. What is the mail carriers who are delivering this mail to the super mailboxes, do you provide that feedback to Canada Post in regards to the lack of maintenance and care on those super mailboxes?
We do, constantly, as do the letter carriers, inform their superintendents and their supervisors back in the depot of what's going on with that. And that's part of the concern that we have as far as the public safety aspect goes. Because, again, in the Fact vs. Fiction booklet, there's pictures about Canada Post's history with the existing community mailboxes they have across Canada. That's their track record of maintaining snow removal, snow removal and litter and garbage. That's their history of doing that, and it's a very poor track record. They think, they say they've been in the business for 20, 30 years doing community mailboxes. That's the best that they've done to date. So the reality is, take away all home delivery across the country and implement that. The problem, it just, it magnifies tenfold. If their history has been so bad about it now, why will it ever improve? So yes, carriers do constantly address those issues, as we do in the union with the employer. We get the lip service that, yeah, we're on it, we're looking after it, we're chasing it down to get it done. But the history, the track record of staying on top of it is not a good one.
Now, the reason I ask that question goes, is leading to a next one. In the report, it's not identified in the city report, but I'll be flushing that out through direct questions over legal. But it's pretty clear to me, with people that didn't have to walk other homes to go some distance to a super mailbox to get their mail, they picked up that mail out of their mailbox, there was less risk on those individuals doing so.
Absolutely.
They have to walk a distance to a super mailbox, and whatever they come across in that journey, you know, whether you have a major snowstorm, our bylaw says 24 hours, for example, in regards to snow removal. Somebody decides to go get mail during that period of time and has a slip and fall, they wouldn't have gone to that mailbox otherwise because it didn't exist there.
Correct.
The city is now open to a greater level of liability. Would you not agree with that comment?
I would agree with that, in addition to potentially the homeowner that is adjacent to the community mailbox, who didn't have, if Canada Post clears the immediate access to it, doesn't clear the sidewalk leading to that. So if the homeowner was in some way found negligent or responsible, the homeowner could be, the city could be, those are all additional downloaded costs. And to your point, if somebody doesn't do it within 24 hours, notwithstanding whatever avenues that may be taken with that homeowner, leading to the community mailbox, somebody still could potentially be injured by that, elderly, the infirm, disabled, anybody.
So I just wanted to highlight that because it wasn't identified in the report. I'm going to try and flush that out. But you hadn't identified it in your presentation. So I figured this was a time to at least put that out there as a concern as well. So thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Councillor, and councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and through you, sir. Nice to see you again. I know Cup W has been obviously following the situation across the country. I believe there are 1.3 million homes that are affected from coast to coast, if memory serves me right.
Yes.
Can you share with us, with the knowledge that you have and the union's involvement, have any, I think I know the answer to this, have any municipalities been successful yet in discontinuing or ceasing the plan that's been put forward by Canada Post with the discontinuation of the door-to-door service?
No, no municipality. It's still at the very early stages of the implementation. Oakville that went in in November was one of the first 11 sites in the whole country that was announced. So it's still very early at the front stages, which is why in the report, or in the comments that I made, I urged council to be a beacon for that. Because Hamilton has the opportunity now to set part of the standard that other municipalities can look to as an example, and, you know, expand on, build on. But no community specifically that I am aware of right now has absolutely stopped the implementation.
Thanks for that. And I know through you, Mr. Chairman, that you've closely followed what's happened in the Commons in terms of the opposition parties and the government's response. The government's response has been one, I think most would agree, has supported the plan, to be clear.
Absolutely. They stood up and applauded when a motion was voted down to step back from this plan.
Right. And I think the two opposition parties have critiqued the plan. And if memory serves me right, they've both called for more study. So neither at this point has countered with a proposal to say, if elected, our plan is X. Is that still the case for both parties?
I've had, I want to say informal discussions with some of...
I was talking about their public response.
Yeah. The official response, I know we have solicited, our federal, our national leadership of the union has solicited response. I don't want to misquote anybody, but I believe that the NDP and the Bloc Quebecois have said that they would oppose the, or stop, halt the implementation of the elimination of door-to-door. But I don't want to say with absolute that that has been said.
Those are the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Conley?
I appreciate your talk today. It was really enlightening.
Thank you.
I know I did an article in Stone Creek News about this, and said I wasn't in agreement with it, and we should be looking at it. And I'm glad the city's taken more active. But you said something, I just want to clear, you represent 1,300 postal workers? They're people that deliver the mail and people that work in the post office?
That's correct, yes.
And you said there's going to be 50% layoff or loss of jobs because of that?
It's out of the Hamilton Mountain Depot, which is the first one in Hamilton proper that's been announced for the elimination of door-to-door up on the mountain, the Canada Post presented their projected job loss on that, which was approximately 50% out of that depot in letter carrier routes.
That depot, the 1,300 you're talking about? I'm just trying to...
No, out of the jobs out of that depot specifically, it would probably translate to in the range of, I think, 50 or 60 jobs.
But in the one depot, that one depot represents all of the mountain?
Most of the mountain, yes.
Because one thing we don't want to do is lose any more jobs in this city. We're hurting, and we need jobs. And I can talk personally about the postal carrier we have, great. We know them by their first name. We talk to them. They appreciate feedback. And I think you're doing a great job. And I'm sorry this is happening to you. But these mailboxes have been around 25 years, and you probably weren't working 20, I'm assuming...
I was.
25 years ago. And was this kind of problems showed up 25 years ago when they started putting them in?
Yes. The issues of theft, the issues of vandalism are always issues that we brought.
Did it come to this kind of format to put pressure on them not to?
When, at the time they were first implemented, I wasn't a representative of the union, so I can't say specifically or absolutely that it was. But I know there is a lot of literature and challenges that went on at that time. But I can't say specifically if councils were ever approached on them putting in obstructions.
My problem is, first of all, safety. And if they're not doing a good job now, I can't understand how they can do a great job later.
I agree.
The other problem I have, and I guess we'll talk to it later, is communication with the city. I had to put an article in the paper before I got any communication with them. And then they came down the day after. So I guess you have to make it known. But I think this council, animus in wanting to do a better job, I don't know, or not a better job, but a more thorough job, because I think we're doing the best that we can. I don't know if we can stop it. But I don't know how we can guarantee the safety of our residents. And that's the big problem I have, besides losing jobs. I don't want to use that. So I really appreciate you presenting your views, and I agree with most of them, if not all of them. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have councillor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Terry, nice to see you back again.
Thank you.
Terry, I'm sure you're very familiar with this, put out by the union. On the first page there, under facts, the bottom bullet point, fall of 2013, Canada Post buried a secret four-year study that recommendations would have maintained home delivery. Do you want to just enlighten on whatever you know about that, please? Because you pique my curiosity.
Yes. Canada Post did a four-year study when Moya Green was the CEO of Canada Post. It started when she was the CEO. And Moya Green, for the record, was in support of postal banking. Postal banking is something that is done across the world and has been hugely successful in other postal institutions around the world. As an example, Switzerland, which is a country with a very rich banking tradition, postal banking... banking accounts for 70% of the revenues generated by the Swiss post office. In Japan, I believe the revenue controlled by the Japanese postal banking is somewhere in the range of $2 trillion. There's huge money involved in that. Postal banking, Canada Post's own study, said it was a win-win. It would generate huge revenues, and I believe they anticipated something like 20% year-over-year revenues increased through postal banking. It is an opportunity, again, because the post office is owned by the Canadian public, even if, and Canada Post as it exists now is profitable, but even if postal banking became part of that and had to cross-subsidize part of the postal institution, that's fine, because the Canadian taxpayers benefit from the increased revenues. If Canada Post were, if this is an agenda about privatization, that $1.6 billion is going to have to be made up by the Canadian taxpayer, because the post office isn't going to be generating that for Canadians, that'll be going in the pocket of private sector. So postal banking is the way to go. Canada Post buried it through a Freedom of Information request by a parliamentary media outlet. It was uncovered and found to be that was the way Canada Post was supposed to go. And when I myself have asked the representatives here at a meeting in Oakville, where is the counter-study now saying that that's not the way to go? Where's the four-year study saying that's not the profitable way for Canada Post to go? They don't have an answer for that. They're just not going that way. Which always brings me back to my question, whose interests are they looking after? Is it the big banks who don't want us to get into that business? Or is it the Canadian taxpayers who own the post office? So postal banking is a big win, it works in every, other than one country that does it, and many, many do. It has been hugely successful. Canada Post should be in that, and that should be part of the public dialogue that needs to happen.
Thanks for that explanation, Terry. So to summarize, it was there, and with Moya Green's departure and Deepak Chopra coming in, it just, if you will, fell off the table. Is that a best way of maybe summarizing it, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, I'd say that was pretty accurate.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And if I could ask Counselor Pursuit to take the chair. Mr. Langley, thanks very much, I appreciate you coming in. Most of the questions that I had for you have been asked, but there is a couple of concerns that I have. And I know we have another presentation coming after from Canada Post, so if you could help me on this. Are, do you have firsthand knowledge, being a representative with Cup W, of workers being injured? Because where the placements of mailboxes have been located, trying to put the mail in?
We have cases where carriers have been injured trying to traverse snowbanks to get at the community mailbox. We have examples of that, as well as members of the public who have themselves been into that position.
So that those would be the workers that actually put, feed the mail into these boxes, knowing that they have to, people want to get their mail, but nothing has been cleared away or serviced for the worker to actually put the mail in safely? So he's making other options, is that true?
That is true, correct.
Does, and with your experience, is Canada Post, does it have its internal employees look after these busses or these mailboxes, or is it contracted out?
For the clearance of snow and that stuff?
Clearance of snow.
That was contracted out, that's not Canada Post employees.
So we have no, or the workers have no say in how this will be handled?
Correct.
Correct. Interesting that you showed this leaflet, and I thank you for that. When I look at page 22, 4, the pictures of the garbage of the community mailboxes.
Yes.
Would you say this is from one day? Or how long would you say the garbage has been laying around there for?
I would only be speculating on that, I couldn't tell you if it was one day or if it was cumulative over an extended period of time. I do know that in some places where they have that litter and garbage, oftentimes it is the homeowner who is adjacent to the community mailbox that will go out and actually do the clearance of the garbage. Because again, they're just trying to offset or minimize the depreciation of their home by the garbage and the clutter that's around.
Okay. And would any of your, would any of the workers go back and explain to their department heads that this area is a mess, somebody go clean it up?
Yeah, well, I mean, they would tell them. I don't know if any action would come from Canada Post in response to that. Again, Canada Post's response to the issue of not putting the recycling bin was that they expect the community residents to just take that home and dispose of it themselves. But the reality doesn't translate that, and to my knowledge, Canada Post doesn't have a specific mechanism that I'm aware of to maintain the garbage and clearance around community mailboxes.
And is there any time that, with your experience, that you've noticed from some of your members, they cannot deliver the mail because of vandalism to the boxes or snow-covered boxes? Or there's some type of...
Yes, absolutely. Actually, because Oakville's implementation with the new community mailboxes that Canada Post wants to implement in Hamilton, we get many reports out of Oakville of the boxes completely frozen shut. So residents can't not only get their mail out of it, the letter carrier isn't able to open the box to put the mail in it. And that seems to be quite a huge problem.
Okay. And you haven't seen any kind of resolution to have those fixed, or you're, Canada Post is just saying they're going to do it, they're working on something, but it might be another rainy day, right?
It's, yeah, it's, we're getting, we're working on it, it's a problem. We're not getting any concrete resolve or explanation of what that resolve is going to be.
Mr. Langley, thank you very kindly, I really appreciate your time, and...
Thank you.
Any other, I'll take the chair back, and there be no other speakers. Can I have a motion to receive the presentation? Counselor Conley, Counselor Pearson, all those in favor? Very, any against? Now, could we have, we call Andy Patterson, the manager of municipal engagement, and Susan Margos, the vice president of government relations and policy for Canada Post. Thank you for attending.
Thank you very much for having us here today and giving us the opportunity to address this committee of the Hamilton City Council. My name is Susan Marglies, and I am the vice president responsible for government relations and policy at Canada Post. With me today is my colleague, Andy Patterson. He is one of our managers of municipal engagement, and I know that he has been engaged in dialogue with many of the councillors around this table already in relation to the changes that we're making. I would like to take the opportunity to address the report that's coming to council about the replacement of home delivery with community mailboxes. And Andy and I would certainly be happy to answer any questions that you might have. First, I would just like to give a brief explanation in terms of the rationale behind why these changes are happening. I'm sure many of you are aware that over the past decade, with the rise in digital communications, there's been a dramatic change in the way Canadians are using the postal system and the demands that they're making of us. There's been a historic shift from paper to digital communications, both among corporate mailers and among consumers. In 2006, in fact, Canadians mailed more than $5 billion letters, but by 2013, there were less than $4 billion letters in our system. This decline is ongoing, and it is irreversible, and it is something that we need to make change to address. Letters are the product that built the Canadian postal system. Historically, they've been our highest revenue, and they've generated the majority of our benefits. At the same time, most of our costs are fixed, and we need to add delivery to new addresses across Canada every year, adding to those fixed costs. So we have less mail in the system to pay, and we have more addresses that we need to deliver to. And this did not add up to what we saw as a sustainable future for Canada Post. Therefore, we felt the need to make changes in order to avoid any financial losses that would have grown over the years. Of course, making the decision to end home delivery was not an easy one. However, at this stage in our history, we need to make the tough decisions. Without fundamental changes to our business, we will not be a financially self-sufficient company going forward, and we could become a burden on taxpayers. The total benefits of the conversion from door-to-door delivery to community mailboxes are estimated at about $500 million a year, once we fully implement it. Delivering to the door costs us twice as much as it does for us to deliver to a community mailbox. And I would just remind you that only one-third of all addresses in Canada still get their mail delivered to the door. So the other two-thirds of Canadians have their mail delivered to other forms, whether it's a community mailbox, whether that's an apartment lobby box, or whether that's a rural mailbox at the end of their driveway. The changes we are making are necessary to secure the future of postal system for all Canadians. As for our activity in Hamilton, to date, we have followed the guiding principles and the consultation process that we set out last year to govern our approach to converting approximately 36,500 addresses here in Hamilton in the fall of 2015. Just to give you an idea, right now, there are more addresses than that in Hamilton who receive their mail already at community mailboxes or in apartment lobbies. In fact, about 75,000 addresses in Hamilton receive their mail that way today. Andy has reached out and has been engaging, as I mentioned, with many of the councillors around this table, and will continue to do that as we go through the process. Our operations people have met with city staff. And we've communicated regularly with the affected residents of Hamilton, listening to their survey responses and concerns as we've gone to the door to talk to them. We've shared the results of the survey and the input that we have with the mayor's office and with the councillors who've been affected. 26% of affected residents responded to our survey, and 87% of those told us that they would prefer to see smaller clusters of CMBs closer to their homes as opposed to larger sectors in parks or in more public places. And we've worked based on that feedback and the feedback that we've had at the door to tailor our approach as much as possible. We know that a one-size-fits-all will not work, and what we want to do is try in our implementation to be as flexible as possible in hearing customers' concerns and concerns that you bring us. We understand, too, that some people will face challenges throughout this conversion process, moving to a community mailbox. And that's why we have a robust accommodation program in place. We've met with many groups across the country, I myself have met with many groups, representing seniors and different disabled groups, in order to ensure that we understand their concerns and that we can address them as we move forward with our conversion. We have a dedicated team of experts who works directly, one-on-one, with any customer that brings us a concern about the challenges they may have accessing their mail, recognizing that every person's situation is unique, and that we need to tailor our solutions to those individual needs. We've had a chance to review the report that Hamilton staff compiled and is being tabled today, and we've sent an official response to share with this council. But I'd like to take a few minutes to highlight some of the specific responses to concerns raised in the report. The report notes that the staff will provide Canada Post with a technical guide to use during the sighting of community mailboxes. We shared our draft sighting plans with the city staff last September and October for their input and insight. Our suggested locations are often on public easements where CMBs will be as inobtrusive as possible, such as on side lots, by walkways, or in public spaces away from windows and door driveways. We do try and place the community mailbox as close to sidewalks and to street lighting as possible. Once we have received this technical guide, we will immediately assess it against our existing site plans, and we would be pleased to have a continued dialogue with city staff as to how they would apply. We also note consideration in the report of an agreement between Canada Post and the city on technical standards for installation and maintenance of the community mailboxes. In fact, we have agreements like that in place already with many municipalities across the country, as we've been implementing community mailboxes for many years. And we would be happy to continue the conversation that we started about the draft agreement that we sent to the city last October. A number of costs have been identified in the report, as well in discussions today. Let me assure you that Canada Post is responsible for all installation and maintenance costs related to the community mailboxes. This has been the case for the 30 years that we have been implementing this form of delivery. Costs include everything from site preparation, including curb cuts to ensure access, the installation, and ongoing maintenance, including snow clearing and any graffiti removal or litter removal if required. We do look forward to being able to enter into an active dialogue with the city of Hamilton as we do this conversion. We really want to try and be as flexible as possible and hear the concerns so that we can consider them in the way in which we are implementing our plans. Thank you, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very kindly, and I appreciate... I have a couple councillors with some questions, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
Counselor Jackson.
Thanks, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Susan, nice to meet you again. I think we met about two, three years ago here in Hamilton to discuss, as you did with other business people and local leaders, you threw the invitation out, and I was one that took help on your offer.
Yes, you did, thank you for that.
And in terms of the future of the company, and I told you, and still do, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I'm one of the traditional ones that still, by and large, if there's some community project issue, neighborhood matter, program, service that needs attention, I still, by and large, send out thousands of letters, because everyone at least still gets a letter from Canada Post, one way or the other, versus not being on all sorts of social media, some may be, some may not be. So I want to say that. And before I get to some questions, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I also want to say, Andy Patterson, at least from my office, and I know he's engaged, my colleagues as well, on the mountain from time to time. Susan, I want to say sincerely, Andy has been available whenever necessary, starting from last summer, when he actually took the time for a half a day and did a tour of my ward, where there were some suggested preliminary sightings of CMBs, and met with probably a good couple of dozen of my constituents face-to-face, and he's been available ever since. We haven't agreed, of course, on every matter, but I just want to say that for the public record. I appreciate that.
Thank you for that, Counselor Jackson.
Now, Susan, Deepak Chopra said, and please correct me, I'll paraphrase his quote, but the reason for eliminating door-to-door mail service, one of the reasons was to return to profitability the corporation. Now, that's the way we started about a year ago, when you embarked upon this program for the city, starting with the mountain community of Hamilton. Since then, I have sarcastically needled Andy, and I'll do it with you right now. All my sources tell me Canada Post was profitable last year. I don't care how you were profitable, you became profitable. First of all, if that is true, if you could confirm that, and secondly, if that's true, can't we take a pause on this elimination of door-to-door delivery service? Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you, please, either Susan or Andy.
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Jackson. So yes, I can confirm that we were profitable, and certainly, Mr. Langley pointed out that our latest financial results are also positive. However, the reason that we cannot pause is because the challenges we are facing are not pausing. The decline of letter mail is ongoing as we speak, and we do not see that abating. And so we are not taking a short-term view on one year or a few quarters of profitability. We are looking out into the future, and I think, as was discussed here today, we have a mandate to be financially self-sustainable. So that doesn't mean one year of profit or a couple quarters of profit. That means setting up the corporation to be able to meet its mandate of serving all Canadians in a way that will sustain over time and that won't become a burden on the taxpayer.
You've given your answer to that. I still, Susan, and not to become argumentative at all, Mr. Deputy Mayor, because this is a time for questions of the delegation, we'll get into debate later. I would just say, though, when the president throws that out there, so many of my constituents have responded with, but Tom, they're profitable now. So I heard your explanation, I appreciate and respect where you're coming from, but that'll be an area of disagreement, why we can't take a pause. Susan, you talked about current community mailboxes, super mailboxes that have been placed primarily in subdivisions where they were newer over the last 30 years, so those people would have not known anything different. Do you know, I can't, since you announced the program to discontinue on the mountain, I can't find one constituent who has said, Tom, great, bring one over to my property, I think it would be so convenient, plunk a couple of modules right down here, Tom. Mr. Deputy Mayor, through you to Susan. I haven't had that kind of positive reaction. Any comment from you on that point, Susan?
Well, I mean, I think you're correct, that for the past 30 years, these have been implemented in newer subdivisions as those have been being introduced. As was pointed out earlier today, we have begun the con... As was pointed out earlier today, we have begun the conversion process now, and across 11 communities, people have now been moved from door-to-door to community mailboxes, and we are going back to them to ensure that we understand whether or not they continue to have concerns, and we certainly addressed their concerns about the installation as we went through. What I, you know, I think we understand that change is difficult. Nobody likes change. People like things to continue, they liked having milk delivered to their door many years ago, they liked lots of services that all different levels of governments were able to afford in past times. And that's why we are trying to take a very careful and open-minded approach to how we are implementing this, so that we can address people's concerns.
Okay. The $50 cost that you say you'll provide to cover, is that per module or per location? Mr Deputy Mayor, through you to Susan?
Yeah. So that's a per-site amount.
Whether there's one module of 16 boxes or six modules, which would be 96 boxes?
Yes, because really, the way the discussion has gone is that that fee is meant to cover the time that staff might need to take to have a look at the sighting, and so that would be, you know, one site, one look, or one examination for whatever staff would want to do after we give them our draft sighting plans, and we have a chance to look at whether or not they want to examine those. We've seen in some municipalities, we were given guidelines, and we applied those guidelines to our sighting guidelines, and were able to do the sighting without much further involvement from staff, once they knew that they were technically okay. We've seen other places, smaller places than Hamilton certainly, where, you know, members of the staff wanted to go out and physically look at all the boxes. So we've seen a number of different approaches in different municipalities so far, and certainly having the dialogue with the municipality and having that appropriate conversation with them is what we're trying to achieve here. We want to get into a dialogue, we want to talk with staff about how we can do this in a way that's going to meet both our sighting guidelines as well as any guidelines that you might have.
So if I heard you earlier in your presentation, Mr, I appreciate your indulgence here, Mr Deputy Mayor, I just have a few more questions I think are important that have come to the fore for me in the last few months, dealing with my constituents, who are by and large upset with the discontinuation, mostly the seniors and disabled, and many Trillium Award winner properties as well. Susan, if in your presentation you talked about, "We will," again, I'm paraphrasing, correct me if I'm wrong, "Canada Post will bear the cost," this $50 whatever, but I heard you generally use a comment, "we will bear the cost of the community mailbox installations." If hypothetically, and we're going to hear from our staff after you and Andy are finished, we're going to hear from our staff, if our staff can hypothetically demonstrate that a particular location is going to cost $200, are you open-minded? Is Canada Post open-minded? Would you take it under advisement that, so that the municipality does not bear any cost of a Canada Post Crown Corporation change, that you would at least be open-minded to work with our staff in mitigating and/or helping us eliminate that cost to the municipality? Because I think that's very important wherever this ends up. Mr Deputy Mayor, through you, please?
Yeah. So, you know, it's very difficult for me to respond to a hypothetical, Mr Jackson. I will say, though, that, you know, again, what we want is to get into a dialogue, and certainly if issues are identified to us, to try and find a way to mitigate those. I can't, you know, the costs that we've seen so far, and I'm not even talking about the new subdivisions, I'm talking in the 11 communities that we actually converted in 14, we bore all the costs in terms of, when you say, physical installation, right? Identifying the site, you know, cutting the curb, pouring the concrete, putting the box in, re-putting back all the grass around that, like, all of that is what we have taken care of and what we will continue to take care of. If there are other costs that come to light, would we be willing to discuss them? Pardon me?
Like, I'm sorry, like a light, for example, for safety, no stopping needed for site clearance?
Yeah, so we haven't seen that, but certainly that's the kind of discussion that we can talk about.
I'm appreciative of that. Okay, that's good to hear, that's encouraging. Last couple of questions, Mr Deputy Mayor. Debris and graffiti, one issue, and snow clearing, the other. Now, I'm not going to quote anybody, Susan, but in discussions with your staff, I think it's been made clear to me, and Andy can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's been made pretty clear to me that Canada Post has pretty well admitted, maybe we could do a better job in winter maintenance and operations in terms of snow clearing. Because my constituents in the newer subdivisions, Mr Deputy Mayor, that have community mailboxes, and that's all they've known, this issue has come up often, that, you know, the 188 number, try to get somebody from Canada Post there, to get a contractor guy to shovel and make the snow and ice, remove it for safety reasons. It's been hard to get somebody to respond. So moving forward, again, if this installation plan of yours goes through, is there some commitment that Canada Post will step up, either be more available and/or add more resources to winter operations? Mr Deputy Mayor, through you?
Yes, Mr Jackson, actually, you know, I don't want to get into a battle of the photos, because I know what's going around in the brochures, but certainly, I would say that there are exceptions to the rule, and certainly when there are significant snowfalls, you know, any set of resources can be stressed, and you may be able to find examples of where the network isn't perfect. I think we have realized that, we've realized that over the past 30 years in servicing the CMBs. I guess those issues weren't coming to the fore as much as they are now with the change being announced and the attention on the file. So we have already undertaken to reinforce the resources that we have around things, particularly like snow clearance. We certainly didn't want to see in this year, you know, we faced some challenges last year, for example, in the Greater GTA area with the ice storm, and with, you know, the way we were able to deliver. So we already, this year, added some resources and reinforced our snow clearing contracts to ensure that not only will they be done within a reasonable period of time, but that we've got checks back to ensure that they've been done, that we have coordination with municipalities. So if the municipality is clearing after we clear, and a new snowbank is put up there, and certainly if any of our carriers notify us of that, that that will be taken care of that same day. So we are already moving in that direction. We understand that that's important. We understand, not only for the people trying to use the boxes, but for our brand. We certainly don't want to see the kinds of photographs that have been circulated today circulating. That's not good for our business, that's not good for our relationships with our customers. So we are absolutely committed to making improvements there, and we've already started to do that.
So on the snow clearing, Mr Deputy Mayor, that's, thank you, and again, encouraging, Susan, about that commitment I'm hearing today for the public record. Lastly, on litter and debris, why is it that, and Andy and I've had this discussion, so I'll elevate it up to you, why is it that Canada Post can't put a receptacle, a garbage receptacle, at even existing CMBs and CMBs to possibly come in the future? Why won't you put receptacles there for those flyers, for those discarded pieces of correspondence, so that chained to one of your modules, whatever, at least it won't allow wind and inclement weather to create havoc with it? Mr Deputy Mayor, please, through you to Susan?
Right. So I'll say a few things, and they're probably the same things that Andy has explained to you, but, so first of all, you know, people are paying us to deliver their mail. You know, the local pizza shop, the local barber, the local real estate agent is paying us to get their flyer, to get their direct marketing piece into people's boxes and onto their kitchen countertops, so that they look at them and they go ahead and they buy those goods and services. And, you know, we heard a lot today about, you know, economic impacts in the city of Hamilton. So, you know, I ask you to think about the small businesses and medium and large businesses who are using us to get that information to mailers, and how they would feel about us making it easy for people to simply discard those things as they're at their community mailbox. Secondly, I would say that there have been pilots tried in municipalities not far from here, in the, sort of up the 404 in the GTA area, where they put out some receptacles to see what would happen. The municipality did, and not Canada Post. And what happened was people discarded all sorts of other things in there, whether it was dog poop, or whether it was, you know, other garbage because their receptacle that the city had provided them was full. And that created yet another problem, both for us and for the city, who had no real way to, you know, collect that garbage because it wasn't on the route, or whatever the case may be. Most municipalities, including, I'm sure, Hamilton, have very good recycling programs in place and very good garbage collection programs in place, and we just think it's consistent with those to encourage people to take that mail home and to hopefully read it and buy the goods and services that are being advertised or promoted, but if not, to put it into the appropriate receptacle so that it can be dealt with by the city through their programs.
Okay. Thank you for the answer, Susan, I appreciate that. You've seen our recommendation from our staff, Susan. You obviously agree, disagree, have a middle-of-the-road answer to it. Obviously, the eight part especially is asking us to basically be consistent, from the last term of council expressing our opposition to the elimination of home delivery. And again, Susan, it's just asking you, in light of Canada Post's current financial status, which we're all thrilled about, to, just in light of the backlash I'm getting, and I'm not alone, just to take a pause. So you've seen this recommendation, do you have a comment on it, or you'll leave it for the debate of this body? Mr Deputy Mayor, through you to Susan?
Well, I don't think it would be appropriate for me to, you know, comment on exactly what I think council should or shouldn't do. I would say that it is our strong desire to use the time that we've got now, because, you know, we're in the middle of winter now, we're not putting boxes in the ground. So we've got a few months now to, before the sites are, you know, locked down and before people are converted, to have further dialogue, to have conversations with your city staff about the sites, to work with you on any constituent issues that come forward. I'm not sure if all the councillors are aware, but once we do have, you know, draft sites identified, we go and we knock on the door of any homeowner who is going to have a site adjacent to their property, so that they can tell us if they've got challenges with that. And if other sites are suggested, we had about 200 and some sites brought forward to us by a councillor, and 150 of those were moved. So we are willing to be flexible, but we need to have that dialogue, we can't do that in a vacuum. So I would suggest that we have some time now, we're going to continue with what we've been doing, but if there are other things that we could be doing to respond to issues that are coming forward and to deal directly with constituent issues, then we would be willing to do that. In terms, sorry, if I could just finish, I think I already commented, though, in terms of, you know, providing us with specific site guidelines, entering into an agreement with municipality, those other recommendations, we are absolutely in favor of going ahead with that.
I've taken enough time, but I appreciate your indulgence, Mr Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much, Susan. Thanks, Andy.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Wayhead?
Thank you, and I also want to extend a thank you to Andy, and I had the opportunity to go out and look at some sites in Ward Eight. I guess my first question, I think we need to start from ground zero, because this is an education of the broader community, and you did sort of touch base on how we arrived at where we're at, but not really. So I guess the first question I have is when Canada Post, first of all, you're a Crown agency, is that correct?
Yes, we're a Crown Corporation.
Created by the federal government, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Then, yeah, the report or the studies that indicated that you had to do something different because of the bottom line, first of all, is your mandate pure profit?
No, we have a dual mandate of financial self-sustainability and delivering service to all Canadians.
Okay, so profit isn't the driving force, sustainability is?
Sustainability and service, the balance between the two.
Thank you. So that's, I want to focus on that.
Sure.
So then I look at the fact that you had indicated to councillor Jackson, answering his question, that you foresee with emails and so forth, less and less demand for home delivery of mail, is that correct?
We see the decline in letter mail volume, so we saw a billion fewer pieces of mail going through our systems in 2013 than we did in 2006, and all projections are that that decline will continue, if not accelerate. And that was our biggest source of revenue for the past several years. It's true that we were profitable as mail volumes were growing, but now mail volumes are declining, and so, you know, when you're adding, two plus two isn't there anymore when the second or the first two isn't there.
I can guarantee that the municipal tax bills still go up through rail, so there's a lot of core services that will continue relying on Canada Post to deliver the mail.
Certainly. I would hope that there are still many that will rely on Canada Post in the future.
They've done analytics to determine what that core amount of service will be in regards to the demand.
Yes, we have some projections.
Okay. So on the other side of the ledger, something else is happening, called purchasing on the internet?
Yes, sir.
My understanding is that your parcel delivery numbers are growing exponentially, is that correct?
Well, we have had some healthy growth, I wouldn't say exponentially, but we have had some healthy growth, for sure. E-commerce is a huge business for us, but in that business, we're competing with the likes of FedEx and UPS, and the margins in that business, in other words, what we're able to keep in the corporation after we cover our costs, are nowhere near what the margins are in our letter mail business. So although the revenues are growing because we have a fixed cost base, the margin is not enough to cover alone what's being lost in the letter mail business, and that's why we need to make adjustments to the cost structure.
So how do Canadians know that? Because you're telling us that, but you are owned by the taxpayers of this country, quite frankly.
Yes, we are, and we publish a corporate plan summary every year in Parliament that people can see our numbers, as well as an annual report and quarterly financial statements.
So then that begs the question, since we are stakeholders and own Canada Post, what consultation took place with Canadians in regards to looking for solutions versus unilaterally arriving at a decision?
So I think councillor Jackson referred to one element of that, and that was, we went to 46 communities across the country and held small group discussions with a mix of elected officials, small businesses, charities, large businesses, et cetera, over the course of the fall of 2012 and the spring of 2013. We had thousands of people, we had a discussion paper that we published for that and online, and we had thousands of people send us letters and respond through our website to give us their perspectives on changes possible for Canada Post. We also did some polling and public opinion research, talking both to Canadians as customers and also to small businesses and large businesses in terms of how they saw using the postal service going forward and what kinds of changes they would find more and less acceptable from their perspective.
Was Hamilton one of those 46 communities?
Yes, it was.
And so Hamilton residents said that we're okay with going with super mailboxes?
No, we heard lots of opinions in lots of communities, and we did not go directly to residents, if I can just clarify there, we had a session with, we invited members of the then council and the then mayor to attend the session, we had small business representatives from Hamilton, charities, et cetera, that we invited to come and have a discussion with us. And we heard lots of opinions, and I'm not going to hide the fact that lots of people who receive mail today don't like the idea of changing to a community mailbox. But when we looked at other possible solutions, and we talked to charities, or we talked to small businesses, we talked to large businesses, there were different solutions that they found more attractive, too, and we had to balance all of that with what our plan is today in terms of addressing these challenges that we see in order to ensure a viable postal service for all Canadians in the future.
But, well, you are choosing an option that has options?
Uh, yes, to some extent.
Oh, apartment buildings will still have direct delivery?
Yes, all apartment buildings, condominiums, seniors, homes, homes for people who may be physically or mentally challenged, all of those will retain delivery to the door. And in Hamilton, as I said earlier, there's about 43,000 addresses that are apartments or condominiums like, and homes like I described, they will retain their door-to-door delivery.
So homeowners are placing it up to the super mailbox? Those living in apartment buildings will just go down to the lobby as they always have to pick up their mail, is that correct?
Well, I would just note that 34,000 homeowners today in Hamilton, and I don't know, you know, what the skew is of what the taxes are that they pay, they already are getting their delivery at CMBs. So, you know, I point out again, it's only one-third of Canadians that still have door-to-door delivery today. Two-thirds of Canadians have been getting their mail in other ways for many, many years.
So just to put that in perspective, Ward Seven would be, just to, you know, paint the picture, Ward Seven would be getting the super mailboxes, that's what we have in place today, where the balance of community still gets direct mail. So just give it that percentage, that's what it works out, you said 30,000 households?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what calculation you're asking me to make.
30,000 households currently get their mail through the super mailbox.
34,000.
So just to have perspective, that would pretty well cover Ward Seven.
Councillor?
I don't know if they're all located in Ward Seven, sir.
Oh, no, it's a...
Oh, you're saying the number of households in Ward Seven?
So you can have a picture of what that means.
Right. So we, well, the total that we have for Hamilton, sorry, the total that we have for Hamilton of all addresses, you've got 117,000 on door-to-door, spread across the city. You've got 34,000 today on CMB, you've got 43,000 today in apartment lobbies, et cetera, and you've got 3,000 that are sort of ruralish at the end of the driveway or picking up at the post office.
Now, this is the first time that Canada Post has entered into taking services away, because where those 30,000, 4,000 mailboxes currently exist, they evolved with the development of new neighborhoods, is that correct?
Yes, this is the first time that we are actually changing people from one form of delivery to another in this fashion.
The, I appreciate this. So the next question I have is... So the next question I have is, on those options, was, this is what we get asked a lot, why didn't you go to, or put it out down to two days, or three days, or four days delivery, whatever made sense? Or start bringing those deliveries down relative to those, your numbers?
Yeah, so we get that question a lot, too. So again, you know, it's a balance between a number of factors, but what we heard, as I said before, when we, when we got, you know, input through our website or when we did these sessions, we heard different perspectives from different people. Receivers, a lot of resident receivers of mail say that they'd be willing to get their mail fewer than five days a week. However, when you talk to small businesses and you talk to charities, many of them tell us that they still rely on getting mail every day for their cash flow. They're doing, they're managing their accounts receivable and their accounts payable still through the mail. And so the idea for them of only getting their mail on alternate days was not very appealing.
But we could do both, through the chair, we could do both. I mean, you chose to keep it at the apartment buildings as opposed to going to super mailboxes, so we could have maintained a lesser service to those residents and still meet those needs of those charities, that, because most of those are in commercial facilities.
But all of that different type of delivery, Mr. Whitehead, is still, it's five days a week delivery, it's just through different means. That's very different than trying to organize our system so that we deliver a couple of days a week over here and five days a week over there. So it's a very different calculation for us, it's a lot more unmanageable to deliver a few days here and five days there. The other issue for us with alternate day delivery, as you pointed out, is a big growth area for us is e-commerce, is people ordering online. And our competitors there, the FedExes and the UPSs, they deliver every day. So if we were to say, okay, now our network only delivers two or three days a week, we see the propensity for a very large hit in that business, which is one of our only growth areas. So again, it comes back to, we had to balance a number of factors. We understand that change isn't, you know, easy for all people, but that's sort of how we made the calculus.
And this is a great opportunity for those who are watching and hopefully will re-watch on live stream, the answers to these very questions that we as councillors get asked every day.
Absolutely.
Jade, I don't mean to put you on the hot seat, but you are.
Not at all.
And I need, it is incumbent upon me to ask these questions, so it's clear answers to the people I serve.
I understand.
So I really respect and appreciate the answers you're providing, and I want to make that clear.
Councillor.
So the other question I have now is moving, because this was just justification of the service. Now, the other piece is the mechanics of it. And the mechanics of the service is even more concerning. I did, you know, you've probably heard me speak, but.
I did, sir.
I've taken several pictures, and now, since I did that, a number have been tweeted to me, and this has been, not just this weekend or this last couple of days in regards to snowfall, the one I took was accumulation of ice over a period of time at super mailboxes along Rymel and within a new subdivision. Clearly, and then I got areas here that you can't even get to the mailboxes. What are you going to do about it?
So first of all, Mr. Whitehead, let me apologize and say that that's not the service that we want to provide. Clearly, there are issues that we need to address. I think in addressing councillor Jackson, I said that we already have added resources to our snow clearing this year. Any, any issues that you can share with us through Andy, we will go and we will address those issues and we will get back to you so that you can get back to your constituents, and I will certainly take it, I will make a commitment today to take that back to our operations team, to have yet another look at, you know, what the challenges are there and why we're not meeting the kind of service standards that we want to be. Because as I said, it's not just about the constituents that you have and Canadians getting to their mailbox, that's very important, but, you know, it's also about our brand. We don't want to be seen as a company that doesn't care about the service that we're providing, we care very much.
The question, and these are pre-existing super mailboxes.
I understand, and we've redoubled our efforts across the country, not just for new areas.
Oh, I would ask that whatever that standard is, it's not good enough.
I hear you.
So we need to know what that performance matrix is, that the community that's going to be imposed with these super mailboxes, that, that they know that there's a commitment based on this new value or performance matrix, that those super mailboxes will be clean and clear and free.
Absolutely, we will, we can share that with you.
Now, theft.
Yes.
There's a number of pictures, pretty clear pictures, of these super mailboxes being broken into and mail being stolen.
Yeah.
What do I say to our constituents about that?
So our experience, again, in the neighborhoods that we've been for the past 30 years, is that less than 1% of community mailboxes are ever broken into. The issue for us has very much been localized up to now in a particular area of the country. It's not something that we see on a widespread basis, and in fact, I think you can tell your constituents that in one respect, having a locked compartment as opposed to an unlocked box on the side of their house offers some real security, especially if you're away for a couple of days or a week and your mail is sitting there, now you're at least going to have it under lock and key. But we take any theft or incident at our CMBs very seriously. We work with local police to ensure that anything is reported and so that there can be surveillance, so that whoever the culprits are can be caught and prosecuted.
So again, 3,000 mailboxes currently exist in Hamilton, you know, there's over thousands of communities across this country.
Yeah.
So you're just starting in this, in this evolution and process, so it's hard to measure based on the theft, that it's not going to be a greater problem as you start implementing more of these mailboxes. Here's my concern, when I look at these pictures, it's not one individual mailbox being broken into. So when you say that you've got more security.
Yeah.
I would suggest you really don't, because you don't have somebody's door, the mailbox is there, you've got a live person, you know, living at that home.
Yeah.
Versus a super mailbox at 2:00 in the morning in the middle of nowhere in some cases, that somebody couldn't, and on these pictures I'm looking at, they've broken the whole panel off.
Yeah.
So it's not just one mailbox they're getting at. And of course, for thieves, it's more attractive as opposed to going to that one mailbox, to go in and all of a sudden, you know, if there's checks or anything else in there, they've got access to, what is it, 40 in the small ones? 40 mailboxes in one shot.
So let me just address one more thing, and then Andy wanted to jump in. So we've got over 170,000 CMB sites across this country, so it's based on that population that I'm saying to you that our experience is, over 30 years in those sites, less than 1% are broken into. But again, we take everyone seriously, and in fact, the equipment that we are installing now in the communities like Hamilton where we're doing conversion, we are continuously improving our equipment to ensure greater and greater security, because of course, the thieves get smarter, and they figure out one thing, so you've got to go to another. So we've hardened them so that people can't pull them off their stem, we saw that, we've put in stronger locks, stronger mechanisms strengthening around the doors, so our security folks work constantly with the manufacturers that we're working with to ensure that we can get better and better and more secure equipment out there.
Okay, and I want to be.
Sorry, Andy wanted to just.
Just a clarification on that, 117,000.
170,000.
10,000, majority of them are into new subdivision or developed areas of the community. If you took a look at the demographics of that compared to what you're doing now, I would suggest that you might have a dramatic difference in demographics across this country.
You know, I honestly, I don't, I can't really comment on that. I do know that we do have some of them, though, in more rural areas where we've had, you know, there's some subdivisions that get established sort of further out from the city, and, you know, certainly in areas like that, lighting and things like that are important to ensure that we can help the full security package to ensure that there aren't break-ins. So I think, you know, we've seen them in lots of different circumstances, correct? We haven't seen them in some of the environments we're going to put them in now, but again, constantly improving to ensure, you know, security is absolutely key to our brand, and that's what Canadians count on us for.
I appreciate it, I think that is another question I get, when I sit down west of the wall, I get asked over and over again, is the theft and the snow, is the two key ones?
Sure, hi, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, councillor Whitehead, through the chair, do you, we, Susan touched on this, but the boxes that are going out now, that is a subject of the report in this meeting, are newer style boxes. What you're seeing in the pictures are the older style boxes, all right? And we had, the recent Federation of Canadian Municipalities meeting in Niagara Falls, the conference there, we had a councillor from British Columbia, and I can get his name, it escapes me right now, but I can provide that for you, like, he came up to us on his own, he had been a long-standing complainer, he brought the issue up of people breaking into boxes in his ward, his own box. We replaced those boxes with the new boxes. He came up to tell us voluntarily that the RCMP called him to thank him for getting those new boxes out there, because the calls to CMB for break-ins or damage or whatnot, their calls have gone down by almost 90% because of the new boxes. They are much more secure, and we really do take that seriously. I just wanted to add that to what Susan said.
My last question, empirical data shows that there is an impact on the adjacent household that has to deal with, you know, people traveling and dumping garbage and et cetera on their, on their property, and the evasion of privacy, that those homes are going to take a hit, is Canada Post prepared to compensate those homeowners?
So I haven't seen any of the data that you're referring to, and we've never seen data in the past several years of using community mailboxes, granted in newer communities, of any impact on property value. I know there were references made here today, but we certainly haven't seen that.
And again, I want to put in context, the mailbox you have currently are following a regime of new developments versus retrofitting mailboxes in pre-existing communities, two different experiences. And I guess the concern again is, if you're starting to slap these super mailboxes adjacent to property owners, which is not the case in a lot of those new developments, is Canada Post, if empirical data can be provided, prepared to offset the cost to those homeowners?
So, you know, I think what I would say to you is, what we're, what we're looking to do is to try and find the places that are as inobtrusive as possible and that wouldn't have, if at all, that kind of impact, and that's really what we're committing to here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Not to repeat some of the key points that were made, and I appreciate your presentation. I guess from my perspective, the issue is something very personal, I think in nature, and very easy to put these types of boxes in new surveys when people are moving in, understanding what the rules are. The problem that I think we're faced with, not only locally, but I think provincially and nationally, is the fact that you're delivering a service that, to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that is ongoing and has been for, for beginning, I guess, of civilization in Canada. So having, having said that, that's, that's the problem I think people are finding difficult grasping, particularly when we're looking at the profits that you're generating. So I guess to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we're looking at some of the numbers, and my understanding is that over 70% Canadians receive their mail at the door. That's, that's my, when you incorporate.
One-third of Canadians receive their mail at the door.
Well, and researching.
And those are the ones who are changing.
Single-family dwellings, 34%, I have, 25% for apartment buildings, and 12% for rural, unless the three sources that I've now quoted is terribly correct.
So I'm not including apartment buildings, because those are delivered in the lobby, so that's not to the door, and rural mailboxes, again, would be at the end of someone's driveway. So I'm talking about delivery to the door by letter carriers.
But, to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think it's an important part of the equation. If I live in an apartment, that is my front door when I enter, so the convenience is there, no different than that of when I enter my home.
Yeah, so those people aren't going to be experiencing change. I'm referring to the people who are going to be experiencing change. If those people are receiving their mail today in that lobby, they will still be receiving mail in that lobby, and I'm sure you can appreciate that for us when, you know, we're looking at, you know, making our network the most efficient as possible. That's a single stop for perhaps a slightly longer period of time for the letter carrier than going door-to-door-to-door, and it's, you know, the way the network works is you're trying to find the most efficient way to get it to all the addresses.
But really, ultimately, the single-family dwelling, which is 34%, will be impacted.
Yes.
So, okay, but presently, when you incorporate all of that, it's 71%, and that's all I wanted to point out. Now, in looking at the profits, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, in '09, the profits, 281 million, in 2010, 444 million, in '11, 327 million, and in '12, 127 million. And what were the profits in '13 and '14? Not available?
I don't have my black bear, I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
But in around that range, the hundreds?
Yeah, something like 150, I think, don't quote me.
All right, so in essence, in going on the same line of questioning as the previous speakers, the rationale was about becoming sustainable and making these types of profits. I'm not sure how you're not sustainable, I'm not, and that's where I'm really finding it somewhat.
Sure.
Difficult to grasp. So through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
But, just on that point.
Okay. So we're about a $7 billion company when you look at revenue and when you look at costs. So we're, if you look at other companies of that size, the amount of profit that we've been making, although we have been making, we had been making profit in the, in the past, is, is not, you know, super robust, and we are looking at the cost of our network increasing every year. We have a fixed-cost network in terms of serving the addresses, but that gets larger and larger every year as more addresses are added. So every year, we're challenged to try and find a way to both increase our revenues to cover those new costs and to find cost-saving measures where possible to maintain that profitability. And for many years, we were able to do that because mail volumes were growing, so our revenues were growing. And I think, as I explained earlier, you know, at the risk of repeating myself, those volumes are now declining, and they're declining quite rapidly. So while we had a profit, it was not enough, and nor will it be enough in the future, to cover those declines in our biggest revenue area of our business, nor will the great growth that we've seen in e-commerce be enough if we don't make other changes to our network. So those were all the projections that we put forward and that we put together to say that if we didn't make any change, we saw that the company could be losing significant money in the future. And I think you would agree that, you know, responsible management has that responsibility to look forward more than just one year at a time, and to project when they see a significant change in their business happening, you know, what impact that's going to have on the business, and to make the changes necessary early, rather than being sort of hit with it when it's too late to make those changes.
So, so the bottom line is, it's a business decision, and it's a decision about profits and sustainability, and that's basically the objective and purpose of the entire.
The objective is to be able to provide postal service to all Canadians in the future while remaining financially self-sustainable. That is our dual mandate, as I explained it earlier. And so we did not believe that we would be around, you know, why would we be looking at a situation with, you know, large losses and be able to provide that service? That's not a sustainable model, so we needed to balance those two things, and those are the reasons for the changes.
And when you presented this to the government and the opposition leaders, they all signed on to it, saying it's a great idea.
So now we're going to get into the Crown Corporation discussion that I, you know, observed here earlier today. So we are an arms-length Crown Corporation. We are charged with, you know, making decisions, bringing those decisions to our board of directors as recommendations for the strategic direction of the company. We do every year present a corporate plan to the government, but it is, it is our plan, it is our business to manage while meeting that dual mandate that I explained.
So they endorsed it? The federal government is saying, yes, great idea, run with it, become sustainable in the future?
Our corporate plan was approved.
By the federal government?
Yes.
And the opposition leaders signed on to it, all-party agreement?
There's not really a rule for opposition leaders in that process, it's a government process, it's not a parliamentary process, if you will.
And you didn't extend the invitation and presentation to them to get a buy-in from them at all?
We've, we did meet many, with many opposition MPs and with the leaders' offices, both, you know, as part of the consultations that I described earlier and since we announced our plan.
Yeah, so in essence, you have the government support, it's all federal jurisdiction, as we were talking about earlier, can you expand upon that one issue, which I think is somewhat being confused or somehow misinterpreted by many? When you're talking jurisdiction, this is solely a federal jurisdiction, can you elaborate on how the Crown Corporation works, the arms-length relationship, and how that has nothing to do with City of Hamilton or the province of Ontario?
Okay, well, at the risk of going, you know, outside my area of expertise, and I'm sure you have advice from your legal counsel, but we are a federal Crown Corporation, which means we are constituted under federal legislation. There's the Canada Post Act that I think your report refers to, where regulations are made that are related directly to the function that we have as the postal service, the national postal service. There are many other federal statutes and regulations that apply to us, for instance, the Federal Administration Act, which governs, you know, the corporate plan I described to you earlier, and lots of other things around our financials needing to release quarterly financial statements, et cetera. It's not unlike, you know, there are many other companies, whether Crown Corporation or private, in this country that are federally. or private, in this country that are federally regulated and overseen. You have all of the telecoms, you know, you have CN and CP as railways. They're private organizations, but they are federally regulated and sit in federal jurisdiction because they operate, you know, national networks that go across provincial boundaries. And so, we're similar in that respect. However, as you pointed out earlier, we are owned, solely owned and wholly owned by the Government of Canada on behalf of the people of Canada. And so, they are our sole shareholder who we have responsibilities to as a Crown Corporation.
Hence, a stroke of a pen could have prevented this from a, from a political perspective, but they chose not to. That's, that's the reality of the issue.
Well, we, we, we are responsible for developing our plan, and we present our plan.
Didn't buy into your plan, they could have prevented it. That's my point. We own, we own Hydro, we own the utility Hydro here.
Right.
We understand that, that relation.
Yeah, yeah. I guess from a governance perspective, you are correct.
Absolutely. So, so that, that's one thing we need to clarify over and over and over again. Also, with respect to the downloading component, now, let's say, assuming that we understand our role in all of this, and we understand that this has nothing to do with the city nor the province, it's a federal government decision, you're going off on your, on your business plan to become sustainable. Now, we have an issue, and the only conflict that we have now, and we're trying to mitigate, is the cost to our municipal taxpayer.
Yes.
And so, how do we reconcile the fact that we have trust that we, we trust implicitly telling us that this is going to cost us?
Mm-hmm.
And we really don't know you, nor do we trust you for obvious reasons, only because you're Crown Corporation and federal government. But how do we reconcile, then? How can we mitigate that lack of trust? Perhaps through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, even putting it in writing, committing that any of these expenses that we feel are, are necessary that an independent third party concurs with will be covered by, by Canada Post?
So, you know, I think the first thing is to get into dialogue. And, you know, we, we approached the city last fall. We tried to get into dialogue with your staff on these kinds of issues. I understand, you know, the process that you're going through, and I respect it, but I would say first and foremost that allowing that dialogue to happen and working through what may be perceived or what may be real issues is the first way to get at that, and we're certainly prepared to be there at the table doing that. Secondly, your report recommends getting into an agreement with us. And as I said earlier, we have agreements with municipalities across the country about how we go about implementing community mailboxes, and we can do that in Hamilton. So, I think those are the two ways. Let's have the dialogue, let's have the debate and work through the issues together, and then let's work through the agreement to document where exactly we come to in that discussion.
See, this is the, the point of interest, and I think really important, is the fact that recognizing, taking all of the fiction away about jurisdiction and who's responsible for what, and understanding that this is inevitable, I think is important. But I also think it's important to you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, that we initiate that dialogue sooner rather than later in order to mitigate the, the concerns that we have, because at this point, we can't afford to absorb any of your costs.
Sir, I completely concur with you, and that's why we attempted to start a dialogue last fall, which would have been many months before we would have been seeing the implementation of community mailboxes in Hamilton. And we stand ready at any time to come and have those conversations and, and work through those issues with your people, anytime.
Okay. We'll bring you at the appropriate time, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to a motion accordingly. But I think, and I, I, I'm sensing that you're committed to working on that dialogue with an independent party, if necessary, to determine some of the concerns that are, that are prevalent. Is that correct?
You know, we've never needed an independent party before. I think that we can, I think that we can sit down and we can work it out. That's never been an issue for us. So, let's, let's go down that road and, and see where we get to.
Okay. Because the point is, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there are two issues. Firstly, the location and consultation and public consultation.
Yeah.
Perception through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor, is that this is going to be a unilateral approach. You already made your decision, and you're just going to put them up and go through at the charade, basically. That's the perception. So, also, the other, the perception is that we're going to absorb some of the costs. So, if, at the appropriate time, I can move that we, we focus in on those two very vital issues and not buy into anything until those issues are resolved and reconciled, then I, I think that would be advantageous for all involved. And I truly appreciate your time. But, but I guess you understand the two issues that are really at the forefront at this point, when you eliminate all of the noise surrounding jurisdiction.
I do understand those issues. And again, we stand ready to enter into that dialogue with whoever you deem appropriate. I would just point out again that, you know, we have agreements with other municipalities. I don't see why we wouldn't be able to get to an agreement with Hamilton. And secondly, in terms of the locations, we provide draft site plans many months in advance of the work going on, and we have shown flexibility in terms of when speaking with constituents and issues arise, going around with councillors, like I think councillor Jackson described in your wards, to look at what you think might be issues where constituents have raised it. All of that is, is open and on offer for Hamilton.
Okay. Thank you. And at the appropriate time, if you can come back to me for a motion, I'd be greatly appreciative.
We'll do it, councillor, thank you. We have a few other speakers. I don't know if you guys want to have a glass of water or have a seat.
I took a little sip, I hope you don't mind.
Have a seat, or, I know it's very difficult, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councillor Vanderbeek.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'll try and be quick. I won't, I won't, I don't have very many questions. Okay, so I heard you say the businesses are going to continue to get door-to-door delivery, that rural mailboxes are going to continue to get door-to-door delivery, and that 43,000 apartments, condos, seniors' homes, et cetera, are going to continue to get their delivery as they've had it in the past?
So, just to clarify, so, correct, rural mailboxes will continue and apartment lobbies will continue. For businesses, what I said was, they told us that if it were a choice between getting delivery only a few days a week or getting delivery at a centralized point, that they really couldn't see affording getting mail fewer than five days a week. So, that was part of our consultation process. In terms of what will happen with businesses, we've identified in each area what we call business corridors, so kind of main street areas where there are agglomerations of business or industrial parks. Those businesses will continue to get to the door delivery because generally speaking, the volume of mail they receive would not fit in a community mailbox if we put them on that mode anyway. But there are businesses who will change, and there are many businesses today in those kinds of industrial parks, et cetera, who, who get their mail through community mailboxes. So, I just want to clarify that for businesses, it is a mix.
So, in my ward, the businesses are generally on the main street. They'll continue to get door-to-door delivery, is that correct?
Yes, if they're identified as being within a business corridor.
So, I have to wonder, you, you said that you consulted with thousands of, thousands of people responded to your request for consultation, and then you said none of them were residents.
No.
So, it's only the residents that are going to be really affected by...
Right.
...the installation of these community mailboxes. I, I, is that because you were afraid they'd all say no?
No, so that, that's not exactly what I said. We got thousands of letters and emails from residents, and we got a lot of input from them. And you're correct, that many people said that they wanted to keep both their five-day-a-week delivery and delivery to the door. I mean, most people who have delivery to the door for sure would say they want to keep delivery to the door. Many of those people said they would be willing to, if they had to make a choice, get delivery fewer days. But when we looked at the input from mailers and from businesses, they had a different perspective, and we had to weigh those two perspectives.
So, in many areas of this city, the door-to-door delivery is delivered to homes on reasonably small lots in old areas.
Mm-hmm.
And I can tell you that in, in most of the core of my ward, I have no clue where you're going to put a community mailbox that isn't going to be right beside somebody's dining room window.
Right.
No matter which side of a corner you put it on, it's going to be in a yard that's not very big. And I have a real hard time believing that that is not going to affect property values in particularly some areas like the heritage area in Dundas.
Right.
And so, I have a real problem with that. So, now, I guess what I want to know is whether you made, whether you had taken any consideration to things like that and have made any plans to somehow conceal these mailboxes to, to, I don't know, I, I guess my question is, what have you done about that kind of thing for the areas that are going to be affected by that?
Right.
And why can't there be some kind of consideration for, if we're going to consider that businesses want five-day delivery to their doors, why can't there be some consideration for the fact that community mailboxes just don't work in some places?
Right. So, thank you for your question. So, I would say two things in regard to that. First of all, this is a five-year plan. So, as you see, we are, you know, starting with small sections of cities one at a time rather than going throughout an entire city. And one of the reasons we're doing that is exactly as you point out, that it is more in the outer areas of the city with larger lots, more suburban, that it is more obvious where we can find sites for these community mailboxes. We announced our five-point action plan in December of 2013, and then in January of 2012, sorry, and then in, in January of 2013, we put out what we called our guiding principles to how we were going to do that, and we'd be happy to share that with you. We've shared it with the councillors whose wards were active in already, I believe. One of those, councillor Vanderbeek, was dense urban cores. So, we recognize that areas, as you just described, in the, the urban core of cities would require potentially different solutions, whether it's because there's no frontage, whether it's because the lots are smaller, whether there's because there's a heritage value. And those areas are being left too closer to the end of the five-year plan so that we can work on different solutions. We have endeavored in some places, and we'd be happy to do it here in Hamilton, to meet with whether there's heritage communities, people with artistic knowledge, planning, planning committees who know what the city is planning to do for those kinds of areas so that we can identify appropriate solutions. We understand that the equipment we're using today may not be the appropriate equipment for those kinds of urban cores, and so we're looking at being flexible there and trying to find appropriate solutions.
Okay, I appreciate that, and I would like to have some follow-up on that. Thanks very much.
Absolutely, Andy, I'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Collins.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, and Susan, Andy, thanks for the information that you've provided. You, I certainly don't envy the position you're in in terms of selling a plan that, that nobody really wants. So, I, I thank you for, for coming here and, and answering our questions. Just along the same lines, as was just referenced, and I think you touched upon it, this is, we're just into the first phase here in Hamilton in terms of several phases that are to come. What's the final date for implementation for Hamilton? What's Canada Post's vision in terms of having the whole municipality converted to the alternate plan that you've adopted?
So, I would anticipate, based on the exchange I just had with your colleague, that it would probably go out over the entire five years in order to be able to deal with that urban core kind of area. So, it's going to be over the next several years.
And I think there was some correspondence to the, to the municipality in terms of what Phase Two would look like. Do you have that geographic area earmarked yet?
You know, I, I'm not familiar with the correspondence that you're referring to.
In terms of after the mountain and Stony Creek areas above the escarpment, what's next in Hamilton as part of that five-year plan that you have? You have the second phase earmarked already?
Yes, through the chair, we've, we, what we sent was the, the, what we were converting in 2015, and we haven't gone, we haven't sent anything else beyond that at this point. And right now, they're working on the plan for 2016, so I don't have any of those locations or depots or, or whatever at this moment. But as soon as we do, we'll follow the same process. We contact the mayor's office, let the mayor know, contact councillors, let councillors know, and then we move on with our process. So, we'll let you know for sure.
Thank you for that, Andy. And through you, Mr. Chairman, just to be clear, if in fact you find a neighborhood and it's residents who are, are not willing to participate, they don't want the mailbox at the side of their house where they can see it through their dining room window, they don't want it on the road allowance portion, on the corner of a, a large lot, it, it's your plan still, though, to implement the program, whether the municipality agrees or disagrees, and whether the resident or the neighborhood association agrees or disagrees, to be clear? Because I, I know that I'll be receiving calls from someone saying, "You, you need to stop this. They've now earmarked the side of my lot as a designated place for a community mailbox." And I'm, this, the benefit of today's meeting is it's taped, and so I'll be able to play this tape for them as proof that you're moving ahead with this plan, even though we're not supportive and they're not supportive. Through you, Mr. Chairman?
So, we are moving ahead with our plan. However, in doing that, we are seeking input, and we are trying to be as flexible as possible around the issues that you described. And I think I mentioned earlier that in one ward, we had about 250 issues brought to us, you know, of the nature that you described, and in about 150 of those cases, we were able to find other locations for the box. I mean, we do have to find a location for the box, and certainly, we don't want to move it off of John's lot and put it on Judy's and have Judy upset. So, you know, you need to try and find a way to find the best spot, the most unobtrusive spot. And, you know, like I said, we're, we're, you know, we're early days still, but certainly in the communities that we implemented in 2014, we found that by and large, we were able to find spots that could generally satisfy.
And to be clear, if you do not find enough volunteers or those who agree with your plan, you will put a box in on someone's lawn or property who may not want one?
You know, that's not the way we want to go.
I understand that, but it's a yes or no answer. You, you will do it.
We have to put the box somewhere, sir.
That's all I needed to hear, thank you. Just in terms of, and again, I'm, I don't mean to shoot the messenger because it's not your decision. You've been very clear that you're working for a board of directors, both of you. You work for Canada Post, who has a board of directors who's come up with a plan that you're implementing. Through you, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, and that board of directors represents the shareholder, the Government of Canada.
Right. And they're appointed by the Government of Canada as well.
Yes, they are.
Right. So, I, I know that Mr. Chopra was announced by Minister Strahl a number of years ago, Minister Wray reappointed Ms. Matthews, who's on the board right now. And so, for as much as it's an arms-length corporation, to be clear, every single member who's on the board of directors is a Conservative Government Board Appointee, just to be clear.
They're appointed by the federal government, yes.
Okay. And every sitting member right now on the board who's bought into this plan was appointed by the, the government?
By the federal government. I, I would have to look to see in terms of term whether it was this government or a previous government.
Yeah, I've done a quick...
But certainly, they are appointed by the federal government.
I've done a quick scan, except for one, and, and almost all of them, Minister Wray's appointment, Mr. Strahl, a number by Mr. Cannon, the list goes on. So, I, I just want to be clear that the only way, and I know we've talked about the implementation, but there are still residents, and you heard Bill's presentation earlier, he's grassroots person who lives in the area that's going to be affected by this, he's someone whose neighborhood's going to be affected. He's still fighting the plan, as are a number of councillors who hold out some hope that the plan will change. I want to be clear, the only way, through you, Mr. Chairman, for the, for the plan to change is for the board to either come up with a new plan or for a new board or a new government to come in place with an alternative. Would that be a safe assumption to make, that the only way, this five-year business plan that you're now working from here in Hamilton, the only way for that to change is for the government to change or the government to have a different position than they hold today?
Look, this is management's plan. This is our plan. We looked out, we looked at all of the factors, we tried to balance everything, and we came up with what we thought was the best plan to meet our dual mandate of delivering postal service for all Canadians in a financially self-sustaining manner.
But I heard you say earlier in response to another question through you, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, that the government approved your plan. If the government didn't approve your plan, would you be moving forward with what you have today?
We submit a corporate plan every year, and the government approves that as the shareholder, you're correct.
And if it's not approved, you don't move ahead with the plan?
We would go back and develop another plan.
Right. So, I just want to be clear that for those people who are holding out hope, the only way for this plan to be reversed is for a new government or the current government to have a change of heart and an alternate plan, a new plan, as you've suggested or just referred to. That's the only way that what, the course of action you're on right now, the business plan you have, will be reversed or interrupted, in whole or in part? Again, it's another yes or no answer.
Yeah, you understand that you're putting me in a very difficult position, however, because I don't really want to be in the position of commenting on political matters.
I don't mean to debate, but it's not your decision. I, I think people need to clearly understand what the process is here. And your employees who are following a decision that's been made by a board of directors who are beholden to the government, who've been appointed by the government. And I understand the arms-length rationale that's been put forward, but most people who are in the political know, who follow politics, clearly understand that these are all government appointees. They make a lot of money. They make a lot of money, I don't begrudge them for that, congratulations to them, but they've been put there for a purpose, and now this plan has been approved and is moving forward based on that direction. So, again, I thank you for coming here today. I don't envy your position, and I know it's not an easy job when you're selling a plan that by and large, you know, 1.3 million or probably just less than that, don't support. So, I thank you for that. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you councillor, and to our guests, we have two more speakers, so I just, thank you. Councillor Conley.
Thank you. I just want to make some comments. Councillor Whitehead talked about real estate values and putting a box there. Have you ever done any exploration on talking to realtors and saying, "Look, if there's a box there, what's the value of the house? And if there's not a box there, how much would it affect it?" Have you ever got a feeling for that anywhere?
You know, it's never been raised with us as an issue until just now. Not just now, today, but I mean, you know, recently, in the course of this discussion. It's not really our business, to be honest with you, and it's not something that we've seen as an issue, so...
It would be interesting to know, though, if you, should or would, just go to some of the houses that have them and said, "If that box wasn't there, would it change the value of the house, or wouldn't it change, and how much would you expect it to change?"
Councillor, if I can just give, through the chair, it's completely anecdotal, but I bought a house this summer, and I made it a point to ask the real estate agent when we were looking, and said, "Look, what about community mailboxes?" Because obviously, I'm on this project and working in, so would, stay away from it? Is it affect the value? And the answer I got from one real estate agent, it is completely anecdotal, was, "Not really an impact." You know, some people actually want to be close to the community mailbox, because that's where they're getting their mail. Some people don't want to be there, right? Some people, like me, it wouldn't matter. So, and I suspect you'll get that kind of answer from a lot of real estate professionals.
I suspect because you work for the post office, you would have that attitude, and I'm not...
But you know councillor, there's lots of elements that go into the value of a house. Some people might like to be under a lamppost, other people might feel that, you know, the light's coming in through their window, so they don't want it. So, it's a little bit hard for us as the postal service to...
Saying, if I was putting on my house today and I had a mailbox in front of it, and I went to a realtor, he might say it's worth X number of dollars, and if I didn't have one, it'd be worth X number of dollars. I wonder, I'm just asking theoretically, or even practically, might want to do some investigation on that, just for your own satisfaction, when that comes up again. For the chair, talk about theft, and you said 1% of the boxes a year. Has it ever arisen that theft from personal mailboxes, people's mailbox at home? Did you get many calls, or does the post, somebody stole my mail out of my box? Do you know any statistics on that?
Yeah, so I wouldn't know the statistics offhand. I would say that it's probably not zero. And as we know, there are lots of delivery agents other than ourselves who deliver to the door, and sometimes when people aren't home, will leave it, you know, on what they think is a safe spot, on the stoop, or behind the flower urn, or whatever the case may be. So, certainly, we do get calls about that, and we do follow up on those as well. But again, neither of those two situations did I want to lead people to believe were, you know, big festering issues. It was just to say that there are advantages to having your mail under lock and key if you are going to be away for a while, or if you're coming home, you know, later in the evening, whatever the case.
And also councillor, through the chair councillor, I can tell you that over Christmas, I live in London, and there was a lot of media coverage over a story where not, everyone's at home all the time, obviously, even at door-to-door. Someone had a camera hooked up to their front door, and you saw the letter carrier deliver parcel, and two minutes later, someone came up to the door and just took it off, took it away, and you looked in the mailbox and took out the mail. So, that kind of thing, it does happen, it has made the media, but I don't have the stats on that either.
And I would just add one thing, too, is that, you know, I've mentioned mail under lock and key, but with the community mailboxes, parcels are also under lock and key. So, there are parcel boxes in each of the units, and so if I were away and, you know, my contact lenses arrived, that would be put into the parcel box, and the key would be left in my CMB compartment. So, those are also under lock and key. So, if we're seeing any issues like that, that could be an advantage to some solution.
Thank you. One more question through the chair. Upgrade, we got older boxes and we got these new super boxes.
Yeah.
The older boxes, are they going to be upgraded so that same level of security as the new boxes? Is that a plan that you're doing, or...
So, certainly, you can imagine with 170,000 sites already, we can't change them overnight, and all of them are at different stages of their life cycle. But certainly, over time, the entire fleet, if we can call it that, will be turned over, and the priority is given to, you know, older equipment, and equipment in cases where, you know, I think, as Andy mentioned, in British Columbia, where we had some incidents of theft and some crime element in the area, we make those a priority, so that the greater safety and security features of the box can come into play. So, yes, over time, with priority on older boxes and boxes in areas where we may be having issues.
And older boxes would be, what, 20?
Yeah, I think the life, it's somewhere between 15 and 20, if I'm not mistaken, up to 25, Andy's saying. So, it depends on, it depends on the style of box, the manufacturer, the conditions it's in, you know, BC would be different than here in Ontario, for example. So, there's a number of factors that come into play.
Well, I should have a lot of boxes being changed.
Well, I think we'll let Andy take a look at that, and we'll give you a sense.
I'm not sure, I don't think I did get...
Microphone.
I'm not sure, I did have a meeting with you people. I don't think I got a list of the boxes in my area that are perceived to be, to some of the residents. I thought you were going to send it to me, but I might...
No, we gave you a hard copy, it was in that package. It was the, yeah, you know what, I'll go back and send it to you, for sure.
Everybody that's affected has a copy of every household that's going to get a superbox, is that right? Like councillor Jackson, councillor Whitehead. We all got those? Because I don't remember seeing them. I remember talking about it.
I don't, I don't believe we've sent the list to the, or have we, councillor Jackson? No, I think we've sent the list, they haven't requested the list, so...
Would you please send a list to all the affected council areas?
So councillor, any affected, and I, sorry, I won't take too long, any affected councillor, one of the first things that we will share, that Andy will share when he comes to meet with you, is a map like this, that shows exactly which areas by postal code are being affected. So, are you asking for then, all of the addresses within that postal code, or are you asking for our draft site plans for your neighbourhoods?
I'd like a copy of all the addresses that are going to be affected, so I can talk to some of them, I will never get to everyone, and see what they feel on the issue.
Sure, I'm sure we can, we can look at generating a list like that for you, and also, we can share with you the kind of feedback that we've received from the people at those addresses, not by address, but by postal code, for privacy reasons, on our survey and other engagement tools.
Thank you very much.
Want to add something?
Yes, through the chair, actually, Ms. Paparella has provided me information, I can send that, and she can distribute it. I just wanted to say, though, that one of the reasons we don't sort of freely distribute that list is, our community outreach process calls for us to knock on the door of every person who is, we were planning to put a site there. We believe that the news that it's there, it's going to be there, we want to put it there, should come from us, so we can engage in that one-on-one discussion. What, you know, what we don't want to happen is for someone to get a list, it gets published, and someone sitting in their home suddenly goes online and says, "Gosh, I'm going to have a CMB, and nobody let me know." We want to get to them first to have that conversation. We certainly, we've, we now have over 1,000 sites out there, so we certainly can share those lists with council members, absolutely.
Chair, I appreciate that, and I thought you had gone through all the, pitch you into my area, and I would, I don't want to be the first one to tell them, either, so...
Okay.
I appreciate it, once you do my area and the other areas, that you give us a list so we can follow up with the people.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, and councillor, I'm going to give it to the chair. Thank you very much, Conley, I really appreciate you sitting here for a long time, and I got to say, Susan, that Andy, I've met him on a couple of occasions, even though I don't, we have, sometimes we have disagreements, we don't see eye to eye, he's been very, very cooperative, courteous, not just to me, but available also to my staff, trying to work together, so I want to compliment on that.
Thank you for that.
Couple of questions, and I know many of them have been asked, but a couple of questions, and I'm dealing with safety, some of the safety issues came up, and you said you're dealing with them, but one I'll use, I'll start off with Miles Road. We have door-to-door service on Miles Road, this goes with councillor Jackson's ward, dividing line, councillor Johnson's dividing line, and myself. They had door-to-door service, you're putting community mailboxes up by the Hydro Tower Line, no sidewalks, deep ditches, they just, there's no place to walk on the road. Why would Canada Post put the safety of people on that road to go get their mail?
Okay, so certainly, safety is a priority for us, and we wouldn't intentionally do something that would risk the safety of the people who need to go pick up from those boxes. I don't know, I don't know that specific road, councillor, I apologize. Andy, do you know that specific situation?
Yes, actually, and through the chair, and that's where we toured earlier this year. And again, that's where we want that dialogue with staff, so that we have an idea of where we want to put a box, what do we need to do to make it as safe as possible. We have a balance, it's a very difficult area, as you can imagine, or as you know. It's a narrow road, ditches, sidewalks. I must confess, I'm not quite sure what the final, I know they put a temporary solution in there, I'm not sure if indeed that is the final solution, where we were looking at by the power lines there. But that is the thing that we would talk to staff about, we balance the proximity to the customers with the safety of the site and accessibility. There are no sidewalks, so certainly on that road, there, you're more likely to have people that would be driving. I know we were talking about a very big lay-by there, which would be put in at our cost. Again, we're not going to download any cost to you on that. And if that's the solution, that would be it. Now, I'd have to check on where we are exactly, and if that is the solution that we're still going through. But it's a balance between proximity, safety overall, and we would build the sites so that anyone going there to retrieve their mail would be able to get off that road completely, make sure that they're in no danger, and then go back onto the road after they get their mail.
So, a dialogue that you're talking about, through you, Mr. Chair, dialogue that you're talking about for something like a Miles Road, you would say, if the city put in sidewalks, we're going to put the mailboxes in, and you put the sidewalks in? Now, would you, you're kind of...
Well, we would never ask you to do that.
Okay.
You know, we would not. I mean, that's just, we would not come to you and say, "We're going to put it here, but you need to put sidewalks or a streetlight," or we just, we would not do that.
So, if there's no sidewalks on that road, even though you're contemplating a putting the community mailboxes there, some people don't have their vehicles, and it's very, very tough to drive there in the wintertime. So, am I hearing now that if there's no sidewalks, you would not put in those mailboxes?
No, we do put sites in on roads with no sidewalks. We build, again, if we need a culvert, we'll put it in to get it off the road. We have many of those sites across Canada, in even in newer subdivisions, some don't have sidewalks, but we do put them in facing the road. We make sure it's safe for someone to get to, either by vehicle or on foot. In particularly challenging cases like Miles Road, where, I know there was talk of it up just past Rymel, there were some other sites, that's where we would entertain ideas, and you yourself saw how difficult it was to put a site close to where those people lived. We were at the, I think it was a Sobeys parking lot or something, which was quite a distance away. You know, you think, well, we could put some boxes in a parking lot, but now those people are very far away. But again, that's where we could have that dialogue, and if you're hearing from the folks there that, hey, that's the place where we want to go, that's something we can consider, and we can do that in conjunction with city staff and with your office.
Okay, and I thank you for that. And through you, Mr. Chair, a few more questions, because this is very, very important. We've received a lot of concerns, comments, and complaints about what's happening already, and I forward those, most of the majority of those, to Andy. And so, Andy has always been cooperative in handing that down, or to whoever the person in Canada Post is. However, I'm not sure if we're all playing with the same tune of what's coming out of Canada Post saying, "Oh, it's handled," and what the actual people, when they're phoning them back, they get this contact number to phone them. If, up to your level, Susan, if it's really coming back to you of what your workers or your staffer is expressing. And I'll explain this one to you, it's very, very important. They got the letter, the community mailbox, and my assistant has given it to Andy, you know, it just came today. So, they talked to Canada Post, who advised at the location that they talked about, Mrs. Hoffman will not be changed. The lady was very, very serious about how the city's going to cross this road on Lymerch, and that they're concerned for their safety. Okay? Again, Canada Post advisor said, "The location will not be changed, we're doing it." She said, the third time about her safety, the answer was, "Did you contact your city about putting a streetlight in? Stoplight." These are some of the remarks that my residents are getting, or they've been told, not consulted, as you've said earlier, not consulted, told, this is where the community mailbox is going. Okay? And there's been some discussions. But my question's going to be, is everybody now has received a letter that I'm aware of, of where the post office, those community mailboxes are going to be. This is your area, this is going to be your area. And some complaints have come back.
Right.
My understanding is that Canada Post has talked to some of these people, and they've made adjustments of, well, where they're going to be. Have the other people been consulted now?
If we're moving it to someone else's...
You're moving it to somebody else's, and if that's the case, okay, go ahead.
Yes, yes. So, if we're going to move it, then, you know, as Andy said, we knock on every door that's going to have a box on their property or on the right of way. So, if we're moving it from John's, or contemplating moving it from John's to Jane's property, we would knock on Jane's door, and that's why I think I said in response to an earlier question, you don't want to address one problem and create another, you don't want to address one dissatisfaction by creating another dissatisfaction. So, it is all a balancing act, and I don't think I can commit that we're going to make everybody happy 100% of the time, but I can commit that we are going to do our darndest to get as close as possible to that as possible, while, you know, looking at things like safety and citing guidelines, and being under lighting, and all of those things. So, we take all of that into account. You asked earlier about, you know, it getting up to my level. I can tell you that myself and my co-lead, who's the Senior Vice President of Business Transformation, who I work very closely on with this, we get reports every single day on the calls coming in, the correspondence, you know, what's going on with the locations, all of this stuff. There's a call every day that goes through things like, you know, what's happening with snow removal across the country, are we getting any issues, are we on top of that? So, it is in our company, I can assure you, Mr. Duval, a very high priority and high-profile project, probably the highest-profile project that we have going right now.
Okay, and I appreciate that, Susan, through you, Mr. Chair. So, the selection, the mail, community mailboxes that are being selected now, and people have been told, as Canada Post, I guess, do you guys have a planning department, that you've, you're going through and say, "This is where we pick and we select"? Have you been working with our planning department to see if it's even feasible? Or are we just doing it?
Well, I believe that we provided your planning department with all of our draft site plans in the fall, but I don't believe that they were empowered to, I believe we met with them once since then to discuss things generally, but I'm not sure whether or not they've been empowered to actually get into the kind of dialogue that we've been discussing is, you know, going to be beneficial here today.
Mr. Chair, so the, so I take it, you haven't been in contact with our planning department, the city's planning department, you've gone out and made out letters based on what you feel, Canada Post feels best at this time?
Well, the challenge is that if we don't have feedback, we need to move ahead, and so we need to use the expertise and the local knowledge that we have. Certainly, it's local teams here in our delivery services area who are out looking at potential sites, who are with staff doing the door knocking, so looking again at those sites. But we believe it would certainly be beneficial to have that feedback, Mr. Duval, but where we haven't had it, we do need to move along.
Okay, so my question is, through you, Mr. Chair, have you had any consultation with our city planning department, picking out any of those sites, or is it so far, Canada Post has picked sites without anybody else's knowledge from the city staff?
My understanding is we've started to get some feedback on some of the sites, but we did receive a letter that, from staff, saying that until the report was presented, there wouldn't be any consultation, but I... But I, my understanding from the team is that they have had some feedback, and I think, I know there were some, through your office, through the chair, through the deputy mayor, that you sent, that I asked if we could engage in conversation. So we have started in some conversation, yes, but in terms of an overall comment, no.
And certainly, if we get the sighting guidelines, you know, that are referred to in the report, we will do a check against, and we will have that dialogue with staff. You know, as I said, that's what we believe leads to the best outcome for citizens, is when we can work together with the municipality.
Okay, so, the Canada Post is right now, has sent out letters to everybody, their preferred selections, or their picks, and explained to all the residents in that area, where your new community mailbox is going to be located, your keys are coming. That's what I received at my home. Some of the people have complained, but that mailbox selection that you picked for my area has not been approved or put into city staff for their approval. Is that correct?
That's correct, because we submitted it and had no feedback. So we used our sighting guidelines, our safety guidelines, and our local knowledge.
Okay, so the feedback that, if you wanted the cooperative feedback, when we sent you, the city council had endorsed, and our legal department has sent yous a letter, knowing that this report was going to come out in February, was it very necessary for Canada Post to unilaterally go and alarm people, and just do this, and they couldn't wait until to see what our options are? And now that everybody is feeling they're going to get the mailbox, that might not happen. We don't know, we don't know what's going to happen. But couldn't you, Canada Post, wait for at least this report to come out before they just made all this alarming reaction to people?
Well, you know, I think I explained earlier why we feel a pause isn't really in favor at this point in time, because we are not seeing a pause in the relentless decline of letter mail. And certainly, when we are, you know, in a country like Canada, you've only got a few months during the spring and summer and fall that you can implement boxes. Working back from that, there's a big process that has to happen, not only in terms of communication with the citizens, but just in terms of our own systems and planning and all of that. So it's very challenging for us if we are going to implement in 2015. We need to be moving along with knowing what the locations are so that we can adapt all of our systems. But that being said, Mr Duval, you know, if coming out of today, we are sent the guidelines from the city, and staff is ready to engage with us, we are more than willing to look at what those guidelines are, and if there's anything identified as a specific concern, I'm sure the team will find a way to address it.
Okay. Mr Chair, you mentioned earlier Susan, you have an obligation, and I understand that Canada Post has an obligation, to make sure that mail is delivered. And so some of your people that use the service want to make sure that their people are taking their mail home and not putting them in the garbage.
Right.
And you also mentioned that you are aware, there's a couple of pictures of having this.
Yeah.
Actually, this is factual, okay? And anybody doesn't think that there's not garbage at community mailboxes, has really got to go there and visit some, okay? But I just want to make the point, we also have a duty, us councillors, to make sure that our parks and our boulevards are free of garbage. And this, when I see pictures like this with no garbage cans, there's a problem. Okay? So I know there's a slot on top, I guess people can shove it right back into your mailbox instead of polluting the ground, but... I know we're going to be having a report coming, probably right after this, and we'll be discussing it, but can I ask this, is that if the report did get approved, would Canada Post step back and wait for some of this stuff to happen, like the mayor going to go and meet the government, looking at other ways of having proper consultation, proper consultation from Canada Post to the neighborhoods, and knocking on somebody's door, a little picture, that's not home, and saying, I've been consulted? Are they willing to do that?
So I think I really just have to repeat my answer that I gave before, and I, you know, I don't want to frustrate you, but you know, we need to move ahead with this in order to be able to implement, you know, in the summer season. Certainly, if the mayor has a meeting or if something changes, you know, we will adapt to that. But I think the best way, in the meantime, to find solutions that are going to work for the citizens of Hamilton, is for us to start to engage in that dialogue in the meantime, rather than stopping. Why don't we continue? And if as we continue, other things are going on that we need to consider in the future, we can do that too.
Okay. So through you, so a couple more questions, sorry Susan. Are you willing, is Canada Post willing to have dialogue or consultation with the neighborhoods at public meetings?
So we have, our consultation process has a number of points of dialogue, and I think you're aware of that, right? We mail something, a package directly to every household that's affected, with a survey, with the opportunity for them to give us comments, whether on paper or online. We do the door-knocking that Andy described. We respond to every piece of correspondence that we get from people who are being affected. We've certainly attended council meetings such as these, where public have been in attendance. And if there are community associations or stakeholder associations who want to meet with us and pass on concerns of their constituents, we're more than willing to do that. What we find is it's better to deal with people on a one-on-one basis than it is to get into a public meeting kind of situation, because in the public meeting situation, people want to talk about their own issue, but then you're doing it, you know, you're doing it in front of 50 other people. It's just not the best venue. So we believe that we have a very robust process. We are willing to meet with any of those stakeholder group representatives. We've, you know, we're willing to meet with you to get issues that are passed on from your constituents, and respond directly to correspondence and deal with people one-on-one. But public meetings, we don't find to be the most constructive venue.
I'm glad you're consistent, because when you met with the councillors, it was always one-on-one, you would not meet us as a group. I found that interesting. We have, and we, we've had a group, councillor Conley, councillor Johnson, councillor Jackson, councillor Whitehead, myself, are having an open forum at Sackville Senior Center on May, February the 18th at 6:30, to address a lot of the residents' concerns. We've asked our MPs to be there, we've asked our legal department to be there, our public works department. And I'm asking you, if you two would come and listen to the people, okay, of, you can hear from them, instead of having the one-on-one meetings with them, I mean, it's going to be done, trying to be a professional meeting, if you would attend.
So just to clarify, we'd be more than willing to meet with councillors as a group? That there's no, we haven't, I don't think insisted that we meet councillors individually, have we? Okay, so anyway, just to clarify, we're more than happy to do that either way, that's not, that's not a concern? So, you know what, Mr Duval, can I just take that away with me, the question of the public meeting, and I'll get back to you on it.
Okay, I thank you. And councillor Whitehead, any questions?
I'll take the chair back and...
I'll take the chair back.
Pass back, I have a couple of questions. I appreciate the extension to offer councillors, sit down with councillors to talk about it. I'd be probably one of the more, and Andy can testify, more of the understanding the legalities and that you have an obligation, so I've been pretty good about that. But what I don't understand is the resistance and the divide and conquer that's taking place with Canada's Post approach to the people that are directly impacted. I'm not directly impacted because I'm not getting a mailbox, because I'm not a corner lot, it's not going to impact me directly, I then have to go get the mail. But the household, the homeowners that are getting letters in the mail saying, this is where the mailbox is going, are the ones impacted by it. And they are very frustrated relative to all the emails we're receiving in regards to responses and answers they're getting from Canada Post. So here's an opportunity at Sackville, to provide them a clear and understanding of what the process is, through Canada Post, to have changes in the current locations of those particular super mailboxes. So I guess, my issue is, I would never let Canada Post be treated, you know, if it be done professionally, as Scott had indicated. It's not about hanging the people that are implementing a plan that has been imposed on them by the board. I understand that, so I would never allow that to happen. But we need to have some clear answers and responses to the people who are attending that meeting, and how they appeal the decision on the location of the super mailbox on their property. And it's not clear, because we're getting a mismatch of information from all the litany of emails we're receiving, and the only one that can answer that question directly, without the dividing and conquering, but do it in a more public way, is you. So I would ask that you seriously consider coming to that meeting on December 18th, at 6:30 at Sackville.
December 18th, February 17th, I thought I heard, sorry.
February 18th.
February 18th.
Sackville at 6:30. And no, you won't be hung out to dry, because I will make it clear that you're implementing a plan from someone else, so let's understand what that plan is and how they can appeal those processes relative to those mailboxes. That's more important to me in regards to relating that information, than the stuff that we've been talking about is more about the higher-level stuff.
Sure.
But getting back to the other issue of concern that councillor Val raised, it's a very good one, is, Canada Post surely understands through the court cases that, and precedents have been set, the municipalities have the right and the ability to regulate the right-of-ways, is that correct?
Okay, I'm not a lawyer, but I read the report, and I understand that there is an ability to pass regulations, yes.
So we regulate the right-of-ways, and yet, you're trying to drive something on your timeframe, without any respect to the fact that we have the right to regulate those right-of-ways. How do you reconcile that?
So I think my understanding is that we have a right of access through legislation, and that there is no regulation today that is fettering that. And I believe that regulation, as I said, I, my understanding is it can be passed, but it cannot sort of fetter our right to install the equipment. So it would be about the how, which is what we've been trying to talk with you and your city staff about. So again, I would encourage that we have that dialogue, and find out whether or not there are specific issues around how we are going to be implementing the boxes in the right-of-way, and that that would be the best way to resolve the concerns that you're raising.
So, I think that's an important question, because it's almost, and it's not you, but there's appears of an arrogance when you come in and say, we got right of your right-of-ways, and we're damn the torpedoes, we're going to put those things, I know that hasn't been your approach, so fairness, it hasn't been your approach. But that's the perception the general public has, and then when we say, look, we are trying to understand what our ability is, your constituents, and what we could do to either prevent it or to regulate it, or ensure that we're getting optimal locations, and all the concerns being raised, liability, risk, costs are being addressed. So we're trying to get our house in order, because it's been imposed upon us.
Yeah.
And yet, there's, on Canada Post's side, there doesn't seem to be any time allowance for us to do that.
Yeah.
Because you've darned the torpedoes, you've got to get that thing done by 2015.
Yeah.
And I didn't hear any flexibility at all in any of the questions that are being asked around here about, you know, now that we understand, yes, we can't prevent you from setting up a right-of-ways, I don't think we were saying that at all. But we have a right to provide certain regulations in regards to setbacks, lighting, and those kinds of things, and concerns as it pertains to the impacts on our community. Would you accept that?
I understand that, I do understand that, and I certainly would like to say that our approach has never been a damn the torpedoes approach. You know, we started this dialogue back in sort of the fall of last year, in the hopes that we could work through what, if any, issues there would be to the plans that we had, and that's why we provided the draft site plans. I understand everything you're saying. What I can commit to you today is, that if after you pass, you know, a resolution today, your staff can engage with us and provide us with those guidelines and whatever concerns that they have, that we will immediately, you know, take those under advisement and work through the plans to ensure that we can solve any problems.
And I appreciate that, I just want to make sure that you were coming across in a different way, that we're going to do this regardless. I want to make sure that you understand and respect our ability to regulate and ask for certain things in the context of the location of the super mailboxes, and you graciously done that, and I really appreciate that. Last question, Andy, you know I'm going to ask this question, because...
Your fourth last question.
Well, sorry, but this is, while you raise some issues that, actually, I already had one question, this is the question. We did some tours of locations for the super mailboxes, and the concern I have, and I mentioned that we have a standard, for example, and, you know, we try to adhere to it as best we can on buses, with bus stops, and 400 meters in regards to service. And I was concerned about whether there's a standard that's been adopted by Canada Post that creates a maximum walking distance to the super mailbox. You didn't have a standard, or you couldn't give me the number, is there a number and a value?
There's no number that gives you a distance of how, you know, how far a person can be or should be. What the team does is, is look at the number of residents in the area, there's all kinds of factors going into designing what they call the catchment area, I know you've heard us talk about that, and how many homes, the size of the site. But there isn't a rule that says you can only be X number of meters from a box, and then you have to go somewhere else. We try and keep them so that it is, you know, two or three-minute walk, if possible, and easily accessible, well, they're all accessible in terms of disabilities, but accessible to the public in general. But no, there's no, there's no hard number that says, we've gone 100 meters, you can't go any further.
And the reason I think this is so important, is we create those standards, provincial government creates standards, and ODA, and distance and so forth, and I'm really trying to understand why we don't do this here and say, you know what, this is, this is the maximum we expect people to walk, this is because of seniors and all the things you've identified, to walk to a super mailbox, and you haven't created a standard in regards to what that number is. And that concerns me, because we do it in everything we do, but Canada Post is asking people to walk this to the super mailbox, but you're not defining a value in regards to what that distance should be.
So I think, you know, we've got guidelines on that, I think what Andy's trying to say is we don't have hard, fast rules, but certainly, if the city has standards that you want us to consider, I'm sure our operations team can look at those, and I think that they can consider whether or not, you know, let's not decide now that we're way off base of where you would want us to be, let's have a look at it, and see whether or not there's room there and there's a need for adjustment, and then we can take it from there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and that's all the speakers we have. So Susan, Andy, thank you, I know it's been a long time, and I'm sure you would like to have a seat.
It's all good, thank you so much for having us.
We really appreciate your feedback. Not all of us agreed that we're agreeing with you, some disagree, but it's just coming here, getting some facts, and then making sure that you're hearing from our residents, and I'll keep pouring them in, because I've got a, as we're doing this, there's about 40 or 50 more here.
Are they all watching or something?
And I'll be sure that you'll be getting them, that's for sure, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very kindly, we appreciate it.
Thank you all.
May I have a motion to receive this presentation? Councillor Murlock, councillor Jackson, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, so, and saying that, councillor, I think it's best that if we move 8.1 up now and deal with this, and then we'll deal with...
Maybe I'll add this as an amendment then, to 8.1?
Yes.
Okay, so that, move by myself, seconded by councillor Collins.
Okay, can we get 8.1 on first?
Yeah, moved.
Seconded by councillor, okay, moved by councillor Murlock, seconded by councillor Whitehead, that we move for 8.1? Okay, now...
Now, on the amendment.
Have we got any questions on 8.1?
But just as, I could add the amendment?
Sure.
So move by myself, seconded by councillor Collins, that Canada Post be requested to commit to directing its staff to engaging in meetings with respect to the locations of all proposed community mailboxes, and also commit to reimbursing the city all costs associated with the establishment of community mailboxes, including lighting, sidewalks, and sidewalk ramps.
So councillor, would that would be part D?
Yes.
Okay. So on the amendment, councillor Whitehead, you had a question?
Final amendment.
Councillor Farquhar?
Question on the report.
Okay.
A friendly amendment on the amendment, staffer looking into this, could the good councillor also add any associated parking enforcement costs? It's not in his motion. Councillor Murlock, would you mind adding that? Any associated parking enforcement or enforcement costs?
I will add all additional amendments as friendlies.
Okay, is friendly, no problem? Okay, so on the amendment, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any against, do we have nine, one, two, three, four, five, six? Okay, good. Okay, now on the report, as, with the amendment, councillor Whitehead?
Yeah, I just had a question to staff, because it's been in the media, it's been topical. We've got this letter from Canada Post that indicated that on each site location, they were offering, I think it's $50 in the report... In the report, it shows the cost could be up to $200 per site location. Could we, in the context of the media and certainly in the live stream, break down what that number represents? Public Works.
Through you, Mr. Chair. That number was a contextual number, to give you an idea in terms of when we had other permits that would come through, the time and energy and cost for us to review similar types of permits in the right of way. We haven't done an in-depth of what this might involve, similar to what councillor Deval said, if it would involve a similar thing on Miles Road, you know, for a bump out or a lay-by, or as councillor Vanderbeek indicated in a heritage area, you know, what would be involved if they were on heritage lands. They would be much, much more than the $50. The $50 wouldn't be any more than to simply enter the site onto our database to record it as being there to be able to look at in the future.
Okay, so I think that was important, because Canada Post is not being treated any different than many of the other organizations that make application. When we want to ensure that it's meeting all the standards of the city, I'm hearing that staff will need to take a look at that, and there's a cost to that, and the standard cost has been in this range. Is that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure that we have the capacity or the wherewithal to check these, or whether through legal we even want to be involved in checking each one of these sites, rather than simply giving the standards by which we're recommending they be checked, they be cited, and then leave it to Canada Post to do that. There would be in some, and I'll let legal talk about that, that the responsibility of the city, if indeed they were to review and get involved in each one of these discussions of these sites, the legal ramifications, rather than just give the citing responsibilities and say, "Here it is," in light of the fact that we can stop them if we didn't like where they were.
Thank you. So can I ask that legal, what the implications are?
Through the deputy mayor, sure, I'll take a run at it. So the recommendation before you is that indeed that you would direct staff to include Canada Post or community mailboxes within the road installation bylaw, along with all the other utilities that are included by that bylaw. So in other words, that is the recommendation, and that therefore that would impose on Canada Post the obligation to bring in and come through with permit applications for each of these locations. And that would enable staff to apply its mind to the location, the site criteria, and that kind of thing, as opposed to handing off the guidelines, per se. And this is, you know, reflecting the fact that it's more desirable to make sure that the community mailboxes are properly cited and located in the interest of the safety of all of the users of that community mailbox from the beginning, and not have to catch up later on and try to look at what needs to be done to improve them. So the thinking was, and the staff recommendation is, that the community mailboxes would be included, as other utilities are, to have to submit to the road installation bylaw.
Thank you. And we have the legal right to do this, is that correct? Through the chair.
Through the deputy mayor, I believe Susan Margulies concurred that that is within the municipal regulatory authority, and certainly that is staff's position.
Thank you. And by doing this, to some extent, we're addressing potential liability to the city.
Through the deputy mayor, that is, to a large degree, what the city is, what staff are recommending is the best way to try to avert any exposure and liabilities, to make sure there's a proper looksee at these applications as they come through.
I appreciate it. My last question, Mr. Chair, is the, I raised this earlier, it isn't in the report, I did have a talk with Janice about the fact that, that by putting super mailboxes wherever they're locating, and by virtue of the fact that people are now leaving their homes to walk a distance to a specific spot to get their mail or their cheque or whatever, it does open up more liability to the city, does it not?
Through the deputy mayor, it does indeed.
Thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Jackson?
So, Mr. Deputy Mayor, I want to thank the three different delegations here today, from management, from the, from Cup W, and from the citizen's standpoint with Mr. Warnock. I am going to be supporting 8.1, the staff report today, with the amendment that we just approved from councillor Murlock. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I really, really wish management of the corporation would put a halt to the process in light of their profitability, in light of the backlash overwhelmingly that I know I've received. I have not had a favorable response from any of my constituents in terms of being open and receptive to having door-to-door discontinued and/or being a proposed possible site for a CMB. So I'm just being sincere, all my records and files have been kept accordingly with all the feedback that I've been receiving for the last six months, which will not be news to the local management representatives that I've been dealing with from Canada Post. I want to thank staff, I think solicitor Adwood Petkovsky, general manager Jerry Davis, and Janice's staff primarily Lisa Pasternak, and Jerry Davis's staff primarily Gary Kirshoff. I want to thank them for their availability. I appreciate the sounding board, that they have been for me along the way the last six months in advising, helping Gary Kirshoff, who's attended with me on the site visits with the CP reps. And Mr. Deputy Mayor, I think in light of the current cards that are dealt the municipality, I think this is the best of both worlds, this recommendation report that jointly has come from both Public Works and the solicitor's office. The A part saying strongly and consistently with past councils' unanimous decision, and if you recall, me raising a two-week squad city council with Richmond Hills' resolution to get this new council on record. The A part of this recommendation that says expressing its opposition to the elimination of home mail delivery and asking Canada Post of community mailbox installation to suspend everything until we have some more opportunity for dialogue and a pause. And yet, in the B part, and also the D part amended now, talks about if these installations are going ahead, then at least the municipality puts in place some regulations, such as we do with licensing restaurants, et cetera, that says if you want to have permission and approval to open up, then here's some conditions you better well meet, or else you'll be in violation and work orders will be put up against you. And again, the type of issues that I've heard, that a number of us have heard from our constituents, of lighting, of safety, of litter, of graffiti, of winter operations, et cetera, and just let alone the, what many people have told me they feel is the unsightliness of having a community mailbox on their property that they value so much, in part and parcel, with the overall theme of not being happy, primarily with seniors and others, of having possible home delivery discontinued. So I think, Mr. Deputy Mayor, this 8.1 is the best of both worlds that our joint departments have brought forward, and I really hope, and I trust that Susan Margulies and Andy Patterson will take this, if approved today and ratified at council next week, will take this message back to the board of directors, to President Chopra, to say, "You know what? In light of all circumstances, in light of what we've heard from the city of Hamilton, maybe we should put a halt and/or a pause to this process to allow some more opportunity for further dialogue and see as the profitability of the company is growing in other areas that maybe would eliminate the need for continuing down this path." Having said that, if it is going to be a reality in our community, I've appreciated meeting with the Canada Post reps to automatically try to mitigate and reduce the negative impact to many locations, and still with many, as works in progress to be discussed, and hopefully to come to some form of compromise. But, Mr. Deputy Mayor, my hope and desire would be that with the A part, that Canada Post would hear loud and clearly, the mountain community in upper parts of Stony Creek and Wynona are not at all overwhelmingly, and by a strong majority, aren't happy with this direction, the company, a public service, a wonderful 100-year-plus tradition of great service to the entire country, connecting the country coast to coast to coast, and still currently, that they would take that pause, take that step back, and say, "You know what? Maybe let's restart the process somewhere else down the road." Thanks very much, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, will you take the chair, please? So through you, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask Janice on, first of all, Jan, I want to say thank you very kindly for all the work that you've done, your staff, the Public Works people, on the short amount of time that we've asked you to put this together, your explanations, your meetings with me, it's been so grateful, and trying to get some of the answers back to my residents, so I thank you. On the B part, that staff be directed to include the community mailbox in a road installations bylaw, and you've got, will be considered the Public Works committee in the spring of 2015. What do we mean by the spring of 2015, the end of it? And the reason why I'm saying that to you, Mr. Mayor, is if we cannot get A, any cooperation out of A, and we're too late with this, I'm just afraid Canada Post will go, you don't allow it, we go ahead and just start plunking these things in, and without really having no dialogue.
Janice?
So through the deputy mayor, to the deputy mayor, we're probably looking at, we were hoping to look at March 4th meeting, in reality, I think we're looking at the April, the first week of April meeting, whatever date that would be.
Okay. Would that give us, through you, Mr. Mayor, would that allow us enough time? Now, that's at the Public Works meeting, and then we're looking at about a week later for it to be endorsed by council, correct?
Yes.
Yep, that would be correct, and I would look to the clerk to, I don't have the calendar in front of me.
Steph, can you clarify that for us?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, the meeting in April would be the 15th. The council, I believe, is the 22nd, I'm just trying to confirm the council date.
Okay. Okay. So I thank you for that. I'm certainly supportive of this, Mr. Mayor. We have a lot of residents in Ward 7, and I know Ward 6 and Ward 8, also in Ward 9, that are talking about this. It's coming downtown. I'm hoping that we can get it fixed now, before the other councillors have to go what we're going through. Because I will tell you, since it's been out there that Canada Post has done this and somehow was put onto the municipality's laps, we have taken a lot of our important time from the Canada Post issue of my assistance, myself. It's just totally amazing how this was down, put down into the municipality when it's a federal matter. But if we can do anything to prevent it, that's great, it's all worth it, but a lot of time has been taken up on our part. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I'll take the chair back.
Thank you. I've got councillor Collins as an additional speaker, if you had another list going.
Yep. Councillor Collins?
Through you, Mr. Chairman, I am able to confirm that it indeed is April 15th with a council date of the 22nd.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and again, you know, my questions today weren't meant to put anyone on the spot or to make anyone feel uncomfortable. I feel like from the beginning, when this was announced in, I think it was 213, this has been an exercise in futility. We have no local representative who's standing up to say this shouldn't happen. We've certainly heard some offhanded critiques at times when this has been in the news, but I'm not holding out any hope in light of the fact that we have very few sitting government members, and the government member that we have is certainly obviously on board with this, because he supported it, or the two of them supported it. And so I'm not holding out hope that anything's going to change between now and the 2015 election, which is likely to occur in the fall of this year. Our only hope is for this to be a front and center election issue, and I think regardless of what political stripe you hold, you know, if our common goal and objective is to see the service reinstated or to continue in areas where it hasn't been affected yet, our only hope, I think, is for a new government to be elected who has a different vision and a different mindset as it relates to the service cuts that are going to be imposed upon residents across the city, not just our city, but across the country. And in my mind, it's coming to our city whether we like it or not, and it is a shame that we haven't been properly represented on this issue in Ottawa, really from anyone locally. And again, we can only hope with people like Bill who presented here today, that this issue catches on in the general public, and people see the only opportunity to stand in its way is their actions in October coming up as we contemplate the future governance, government in Ottawa. So those are my comments. We've had, this is now the third motion that we've had. There's an outside chance that this ends up in the courts. I think you've seen in the report, Mr. Chairman, that our chances are probably slim to none with others who've been before us even decades ago who were unsuccessful. We know this is a federal government issue, it's within their jurisdiction, and for whatever reason, all parties locally and across the nation seem to be sitting on their hands. So frustrated at this point in time, but certainly I'll be involved in the fall, and this, for me, is probably one of the top issues that our city is looking at right now.
Thank you, councillor, and I agree, I think all of us will be involved on this issue. So we have, on the 8.1 itself amended, and the added amendment and the report itself, moved by councillor Whitehead, seconded by councillor Jackson, all those in favor?
Standing recording vote.
Standing recording vote? All those in favor? We have councillor Farr, councillor Green, councillor Murlock, councillor Collins, councillor Jackson, councillor Whitehead, councillor Conley, councillor Pearson, the mayor, and myself, councillor Deval, unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate everybody, I just have to go for a second. A lot of us here, so I think we're going to take a 15, 20-minute recess, be back here, 15-minute recess, come back here at 2 o'clock, everybody, please. Appreciate it, thank you.